Leading us in a pleasure to see you. Thank you very much. And as usual and customary, although you are certainly welcome to do so, you are not required to say.
(laughter)
Next on the agenda this evening, Board Administrative Reports. And we'll start with the Superintendent's Report.
Yes, this evening, and my trust will have the audiovisual effect of the Superintendent's Report available. I know we've been preparing a couple of student reports, our student board member reports, but we'll retrieve those. I'll proceed without the visual effect initially, and in order to keep the board meeting moving this morning, this evening, Superintendent's Good News Report for January 8th, 2014. First of all, Carl Trager Middle School Students raised funds to help others. The Carl Trager Middle School Students collected close to $900 in a penny drive. The money collected was used to purchase gifts for designated families. Oshkosh Food Pantry received a $50 donation. The Oshkosh School District employees who participated in the WCA Group Health Trust, GHT, were eligible to participate in a three-week GHT Healthy Holiday Challenge where the exercise and diet and exercise were measured for points to our G- the Food Pantry, weekly $50 donations. Besides the individual competition, each The second highest point were 300 for Food Pantry donation, and third highest was $200 for Food Pantry donation. Katie Urbas, third grade teacher at Oakmont Elementary, was one of the lucky participants in Week One, and to receive a $50 donation to the Oshkosh Food Pantry as a result of her accumulation of points and being chosen in the challenge. Congratulations to Katie for maintaining diet and exercise during the holiday season. I'm not sure if Katie really wanted that publicized, but that's good. Webster Elementary Students helped provide for families during the holidays. Webster Stanley Elementary School worked to help several families from their school to have happy holidays. They provided new clothes for 23 families who needed help. In addition, they provided a holiday meal for 10 families. At Webster, we care and love to learn. Thank you to the Elementary Strings Program, a $400 donation for Ian Laura Ramenplanger's name. Laura was the 2013 Professor of the Day at the Educational Leadership Department of UWO Oshkosh College of Education and Human Services. Part of the award was an honorarium which was given to the Elementary Strings Program. We appreciate the generous donations. And lastly, as we've been on holiday break, it's a very short list of Superintendent's Calendar for the past week and a half period. I would just also like to note the fact that the strong cooperation, unfortunately, losing two days of school for extreme cold, all parties who participated in both notification and handling of this difficult situation, including especially our building maintenance and custodians. I did remind everyone that it took more energy to operate our schools for two days empty than it normally does because when we have them full of children, the reality is that we have a lot of internal warming by lots of young people wandering around the buildings. But all buildings were maintained. We had no failure of buildings during the extreme cold. And this morning, our transportation provider, Cobusen, had buses, as I understand it, up and running that I was promised yesterday, and up and operating already at 3:00 this morning to make sure they all were running and somewhat warm as the first day of school back returned. So we will hopefully avoid having June 15th school by not having too many more snow days or cold days in the school year. So with that completes the Superintendent's Report.
All right. Thank you. I guess, David, do you have a report? Or Emma?
Yeah, and today we are going to just do more than one.
Okay. So for the Oshkosh West High School Report, first I'd like to say Happy New Years. Similarly, the winter break, there was a lot of fun with friends and everything, but not as much going on actually high school-wise. But to start things off, firstly, there's a budget survey that Oshkosh North and West both sent out to the students. And it's basically explaining and getting a little bit in more detail what students want of their high school and like more budget questions and information to the students. And I think that it's just something where the student involvement, we could promote this survey. I'm going to talk to Emma about it, and we're going to see what can our student governments and councils do to actually talk to the students and then have the students talk to their friends about it, because we've got a lot of intelligent people in our district, and I think that the more people that answer the survey, the better. Also, with student involvement, we've got P Club starting. For two years, myself, I've been a part of it, and the supervisor's Mr. Miller, he's a great guy, everything. It's just a wonderful trip to Nordic, and we've got a big trip at the end of the season, and something really fun that I feel or that I've seen at the meetings, a lot more people are going out for it. Athletic games, not only does the pep band have a lot of participation, but I've seen in the student section as well, there's a lot more people coming to those, so it's great to see that. On March 29th, we've got Oshkosh West Basketball Mattress fundraiser, which is cool to see the basketball team actually putting on a fundraiser, and they'll be in the new gym. Now for sports, we've got the wrestling, January 16th at Fond du Lac at 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM, I believe, and at Nina at 7:45 PM. The girls and boys varsity basketball team, the 17th, will be facing North at West at 6:00 PM, and it starts with the girls, followed by the boys. Now for the student government agenda, basically, we're coming back from break, and what we want to do is kind of institute a new classroom organization, because we recently located into a different classroom, and we all agreed that what we feel would be necessary is actually having maybe a calendar of some sort, and then a whiteboard next to it, so we can write down current events on the whiteboard and actually start planning out month by month, so we can prepare way advanced, like months ahead of time, so we know what we're doing. We also have a Winter Formal and Snow Blast to look forward to. Intermarils puts on Snow Blast, so we help, so we're looking to help them with it. And the Winter Formal, last year was Homecoming, too, we called it, so we need to start planning for that. Now, with the, with the Teacher's Breakfast, we recently completed an event, and this basically, we put on, we bought a ton of donuts from Festival, it was quite a lot of boxes, and we got a bunch of coffee together, and it was really cool to see a bunch of teachers coming together, enjoying, laughing, talking. And we get the Magicals from West to come in, and they had a great time. It was delightful to see that. So that was something that we can put on our agenda that was very, very well put together. Now, O'Neil and Diego Honor Societies, we've got an academic induction for grades and hard work. This will be taking place at the Kimball Auditorium, 5:00 PM Monday. And now, eighth grade open house day, this will be Thursday. And I know it's a great transition for every middle schooler to go into high school, and I'm a part of Project West and ironically Drumline. So basically, we've got a bunch of Oshkosh Project West people coming in and explaining what high school's about, and giving them more information to these middle school students, because we know how scary it can be going into the high school. And the Drumline will also be performing to kind of get the mood very upbeat and happy. So that's something to really look forward to. And as always, it's a wonderful Wildcat Wednesday today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, David. Emma?
So just kind of with getting back into the new group of things, January's kind of a more relaxed, laid-back month for us at North. So before we went on Christmas or holiday break, we had Holiday Pajama Day and Comfy Days, so there we were in our holiday pajamas, sweatpants, slippers, all the warm stuff, and just kind of comfy day, relax at school. Then we had at least Sweater Day, which you can see some true beauties up on there, and that was a big fun one. There was also Flannel Day, and that was the first time our teacher, new teacher from to North had participated in Spirit Days, so we finally talked her into it. And then we had Class Colors Day, as you can see up there, that's my English class, and seniors are white this year. We also, at the end of the week, had a holiday concert with Magicals Orchestra and the Band. And our holiday basketball game was holiday-themed, as you can see, everybody in their Santa hats and holiday fun stuff. And we also had a cafe, Holiday Cafe, for all of our teachers. A big thanks to Catherine Durina, who put that all together and brought in food, had it catered in, had a big committee come in throughout the day and just make sure that there was enough, and greeting all of our staff. The football WIA Rural Mutual Insurance Sportsmanship Award was given to Oshkosh North, and it is presented to one school program and community in each of the state's tournaments that exemplifies outstanding sportsmanship by athletes, coach, fans, bands, and spectators. So that was a huge, really good feeling for the football team, for us, as everybody comes together at North. And then what's to come, we have a bunch of sports teams competing in the month of January, and this Friday, oh, January time, my bad, between the JV and Varsity game, the WIA will be presenting the sportsmanship award that we had received, and like to wish good luck to all of our students with finals.
Any other reports from other groups? No? All right. Well, thank you very much for the updates on North and West. We will then proceed to Workshop Number One, Oshkosh for Education Quarterly Report. Beth Wyman, Dave Gunlock.
Can I make a motion on this before we start the workshops? I'd like to move that we move Workshops Six and Seven to the Two and Three slot, so that we can get to the budget stuff and the referendum stuff while I'm still fresh.
So moved. You moved, second.
Second.
I guess, now that it's been seconded conversation, I guess I would prefer to leave it as is, only knowing that there are people here presenting on one through five who don't necessarily have to stay for Six and Seven, and once we get into Six and Seven, it's a natural progression into the individually considered resolutions which relate to both Six and Seven.
It looks to me like Items One and Two include three people, three of the same people for each of those two, so perhaps moving Six and Seven up to the third and fourth slots would make more sense.
Are you making an amendment to the amendment?
I'm just making an observation.
Okay. Any other comments about the order of the workshops? All right, then call the roll.
(inaudible).
Aye.
(inaudible).
Aye.
Aye.
No.
(inaudible).
Aye.
Aye.
No.
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 I guess in that case, I will ask you to step down.
No.
No, she's first.
Oh. How was, you said Six and Seven.
To two to three. Leaving one where it is.
Oh, all right. My apologies.
I didn't want Beth to have to wait around.
Thank you, John. Well, thank you. I'm very excited to be here. I have never written so many notes. I'll try to go through them fast. I normally mapeled the bullet point, but there's so much information to share with you this evening, and it's all very exciting. So I wanted to update you on the activities of Oshkosh for Education. The Education Commission had an organizational meeting on December 17th, and it was the first time that the group had gotten together since the annual report, which was given to the community in September, where we introduced the Education Commission members. We talked again about our role with the community. We had gotten some comments that we were put together as the referendum committee to push the referendum through. That is absolutely not true. We are a much longer-term strategic committee, and this committee certainly will work with the referendum, and we'll talk more about that later, but I want you to understand that this was not a committee pushed to put together for that, and I want the community to understand that. We are assisting in developing partnerships so that the community and the public schools can have positive relationships and maximize all of our resources. We are the watchdogs of the strategic plan and the metrics that came from the results of the community listening sessions, which were hosted last January and February. It's hard to believe what we have accomplished in a little over a year. We do not have an agenda, but rather offer support for the outpouring of interest for our public schools from the community members. These coordinated activities between the community and the school district were showcased in a presentation that Stan Mack and I made in Madison in November. We were asked to speak about unique partnerships which have been developed between the community and between the school district. Many of the people in attendance were very surprised to hear of our positive relationships. As part of this December meeting, where we got the Education Commission together, we asked Stan Mack, Dave Gunlock, Kim Brown, and Julie Mosier to come to talk about the strategic plan and the accomplishments to date. We went through each of the priorities by goal. We will not go through by goal this evening, but rather, I'd like to tell you about the progress that's been made, that we would like to highlight from each one of the priorities. One of the most important things that the Commission learned is that the strategic plan is a living document which is updated every Monday. So anyone in the community on a given Monday can go to your website, click on the strategic plan, and see how it has changed from the week before. And believe me, it changes every single week. We believe that this document will be relevant for about three years, and at that point, it will have to be updated. There's been a great done, great deal done already, but so much more to do. Priority One, support and recognize the value of our quality teachers by all community members. Our committee questioned how the progress in this step relates to teachers' compensation, recruitment, and retention. Stan Mack told us that positive working conditions certainly have an impact on the longevity of the teacher, but even in the best conditions, we don't make up for the fact that we are at a lower starting wage than our competitors. Most of the starting wages in districts in the state, and certainly the areas around us, are substantially higher. Executive Teams assures us that they are working on a development of compensation plan, but this was a concern for our committee, that we were not competitive in starting wages. Professional Experiences. Very exciting. We hosted the WTI Academic Forum at Carl Trager. There were 400 people in attendance, and Dave Gunlock specialized in this forum. In 2010, we couldn't apply because we couldn't support it, and we didn't have the technology to support it. In 2011, we applied for a grant, and we've received one each year after that. In 2013, not only did we host the event, but over half of the presenters were our own teachers. What tremendous strides they have made in technological advances in the past three It also brought a great deal of dollars to our community, because many of the people that attended were from out of town. So we were talking about economic development and what a positive influence that one convention, one forum, had on our community. Priority Two, working together to achieve a common goal. We learned about Infinite Campus, which seems to relate to not only this priority, but many more priorities, especially in the communication area. The program's very exciting, because it allows the school district to implement a new student information center, which will tie into the data warehouse. The data warehouse will be used to track the metrics of not only each school or the district, but rather of each student throughout their student life in our system. This could extend to a post-high school experience, because they'll be issued an ID number, and we'll be able to track their activity even after they leave high school. This is something we have not been able to do before, so we don't know where many of our students are going unless they self-report, which in many cases doesn't happen. These numbers will allow us to, at the beginning of Oshkosh for Education, we said we will have metrics, and they will be visible in the entry of each school. We haven't had the numbers to do that. This system will allow us to do it. It should start in the 2014-15 school year. Now, all we need is the money for the monitors to show all of the students, the parents and the community, when they walk into the doorway, what the school and the district are measuring. Priority Three, Communication. The Infinite Campus mentioned in Priority Two will also give us a communication system that we can promote our measures of success. We can deal with real students and real performance. Teachers will be able to deal with real-time teaching and learning opportunities for each student. Currently, we have to wait sometimes weeks, months, to get the data that we need. With this system, we'll be able to get it instantaneously, and it'll aid the teachers tremendously. We also believe that the performance numbers will match up and exceed others in our area, and we'll be able to promote our school district throughout the area. The Education Commission was very surprised to learn the district did not have a specific person who specialized in marketing. Many business people sit on the Education Commission, and they can't imagine not having a marketing department for their business. School districts today are a business, and they would like to see someone who focuses on promoting the district and marketing the district. Priority Four, Equity Among Schools. There was a great deal of discussion about equity among ZIP codes. We realize that there needs to be more in-depth discussion with regards to south-side space and service issues. We believe that we've lost some 54902 families to other areas, Nina, North Fond du Lac, schooling at home, because of a lack of a long-term solution to their elementary school deficiencies. The Commission asked the executive team to do a survey to determine if that was in fact true, and verify the reason for those families' departure. We are happy to hear that the response intervention plan is being implemented, to be sure that all kids have a better chance to succeed. We learned that universal instruction is a key component, and that'll be emphasized with professional development and sources, which relates back to Priority Number One. And there are many processes and structures that are being created to ensure there will be feedback to the teachers to help meet the needs of the students on a timely basis. Priority Five. This one is probably the most exciting, and I'm sorry it's the most lengthy, but it's very relevant. Teaming with Groups Within the Community to Develop Educational Experiences. Goal 5A deals with partnering with community resources. We can now use the Oshkosh Community Intervention Team for support of K-8 students. There's been a plan developed called HOST, and I don't know what the acronym stands for, Helping Our Students Drive. Thank you. To ensure mental health services are being offered to those children that need this service at an earlier age. Next year, there will be a full-time person at Washington, the year after that at Webster, the year after that at North. That ensures that the children that start at Washington with these services will be able to carry them through all of their school years. Goal 5B, Partnering with the Chamber and Businesses. We have had tremendous success in this area. The Chamber has hired a work-development person, her name is Patty Andreessen-Shu, and she's coordinating many of the efforts between the business communities through the school district. She's working on internships, apprenticeships, partnerships, and finding relevant educational experience for students and teachers that'll benefit the community, schools, and businesses. Let me tell you a little bit about what she's been doing. Work Experiences. The Chamber is assisting the school develop, the school district in developing work-based education programs to include youth apprenticeships and internships. They partner with Oshkosh Bergstrom Divisions, who have been incredibly enthusiastic and offered support in the following areas. They've hired two interns in automotive detail. They've approved the employment of two automotive technician apprentices. In addition, Bergstrom has a scholarship through Fox Valley Technical that they, that the apprentices could apply for. This is very exciting. Career Exploration. The Chamber is going to market support and implement, along with the school district, career exploration programs. The PI Council Partners in Education will partner Chamber Member Employers, Schools, UWO, Fox Valley Tech, and Educational Support Program Managers to test and provide feedback on a new employer section of Wisconsin Career Pathways site. The site was developed by Marge Rubin, Director of College and Career Pathways at Fox Valley Tech. It's designed to be used by students as they plan their coursework, work experiences, and post-secondary education. Employers would be able to input their profiles, add work experience, needs, and speaker and company tour opportunities. There's going to be the annual citywide eighth-grade exploration, which has been ramped up a little bit this year. It's going to provide students with job shadowing opportunities and inform them of the employment opportunities within the Oshkosh area. On March 21st, at Perry Tipler, there will be the Career Fair. It'll be followed by a company site in April. Lisa Brown, Counselor Tipler, helped champion this project last year. The Chamber is, this year, is recruiting participants, and the school district is managing the event implementation at schools. Lourdes is paying for the breakfast for the volunteers. Junior Achievement will be providing the curriculum before the site visit, so the students will go to this event on March 21st. It's going to be a round robin of sorts, where the students will be able to talk to three employers. Prior to the visit to one of those employers, Junior Achievement will be developing the curriculum. What a wonderful partnership to have Junior Achievement working with us again. The tours will be on April 7th, 8th, and 9th, and there are 16 employer location sites that they will be able to choose from. Some of the employers that are participating are EAA, Dealer Fire, Evergreen, CR Meyer, Four Imprint, and Silver Star, formerly Miles Kimball. Very exciting businesses to be working with. There's going to be Sophomore Career Exploration at North Communities Program. The Communities is a magnet school that's at North, and it's included a module on career exploration. They will be tending the five following locations, Dealer Fire, J Manufacturing, Four Imprint, EAA, and Oshkosh Corp. They also are planning after-school experiences. Learning for Life is a group that provides Explorer Clubs after-school experience for high school students to further develop their post-high school career interests. The Construction Explorer Club will be starting soon. The partners are the Home Builders Association, the school district, Fox Valley Tech, and Habitat for Humanity. They're all partnering together to give these students some career insight. The Aviation Explorer Club is in the early planning stages. The partners in this club are EAA, Sonics, school district, and the Chamber. The Chamber wants you all to know that the businesses have stepped up, and they are so willing to give of their time and their talents in the areas of college, career and community readiness for our students. They know and understand the importance of creating partnerships, which will further economic development as a community. Back to our Priority Five goals. Goal 5C, Partnering with the City. DARE, which is offered currently in fifth grade, has updated its curriculum to reflect making positive choices and is receiving good reviews. In addition, an action team is exploring offering DARE at the middle school in grade seven. In the health classes, where choices students are facing are more real and relevant, the school district is possibly looking at a fall 2014 implementation. The school district is possibly looking at a fall 2014 implementation. Goal 5D, partnering with higher education. Currently, we're working with the Technical College to develop an IT pathway from beginning to end of high school for students which would allow them to leave high school with an IT certificate. Because of this program, we could be implementing the Cisco Network Academy in 2015 and 2016. This could be the first in the state. Many of these students would have the opportunity to work at the Student Help Desk for Cisco. Goal 5E, reverse the trend of students leaving the school district because of open enrollment to other districts. There has been an e-academy developed and more thought processes about future ones. Other areas have offered it in the past, we have not, and now we will be able to take advantage of that opportunity. Goal 5F, South Side Space Program. There does need to be a long-term solution, but other things have to happen first in order to accomplish this goal. There has been conversation with the city with regards to using TID funds, which will come back to the school district from the TIF districts that have been successfully developed in the past. What issues are there in developing and listing metric results? We talked how we would have all of these metric results. Well, we realized that the strategic plan is keeping us focused and it appears that we are moving in the right direction, but we do want metrics to measure student performance. While some data is not available yet, which will be measured in the future, we know that the use of the strategic plan has the entire district focused and going the same direction. Student achievement is on the upswing and we will be able to prove it as data becomes available, hopefully through the Infinite Campus program. It'll allow all members of the students' learning team to follow the student throughout their educational career. What do we know about yearly results so far? We know that currently literacy scores are flat. That's not acceptable to us and I'm sure it's not acceptable to you or anyone in the school district. They're still getting data from the fall quarter. It's important that we get more time-relevant data so we are able to act on it. To deal with something now from the quarter that's happened isn't helping the child that has struggled in these areas. It's important that we're able to get success rates of students after they leave school. We talked about how Infinite Campus would allow us to do that. Each school currently has a student learning objective, an SLO. Each teacher has an SLO. The challenge is how to make it public and how to display it. When we went to Mobile, Alabama, we saw how they mapped each student with their SLO for each individual plan. We'll get there, but that has to be on our...
Radar.
Thank you. Radar. I was at Dashboard and I couldn't get off of Dashboard. Radar, thank you Barbara. One thing that pressed us most about the many accomplishments were how so many of them had been accomplished through using partnerships and teams, both in the community and educational partners. We believe that all these accomplishments are just the tip of the iceberg of what we can expect to see in the future. As we've said all along, the measurements of student achievement will work hand-in-hand to reconnect our community with our public school system, ultimately offering a richer life for all who live, work, and play here. We then talked about the referendum and it was a lengthy discussion, and you have to remember this was a month ago, so we didn't have as much information even as we have now. But these were some of our thoughts. While this is not a referendum committee, we understand that the current financial situation in the district will not allow it to accomplish many of the things that the community said that they want. Many of the items mentioned, the strategic plan, have been done for no cost or have saved the district money, but there are things that need to be financed if we are not only going to maintain the status quo, but more importantly, move this school district forward. Just a reminder for what the community said that they wanted and what was written into our community agreement on May 22nd, 2013. Today, May 22nd, 2013, we are here to agree as a community that these priorities are important to us and we will do our part to achieve them together by doing the following: Assume full community ownership of our public schools. Expect and insist on excellence in education, not mediocrity. All high school graduates are post-high school education, career, and lifelong learning-ready. The day-to-day operation of schools and system maintenance maintains a focus on learning as the top priority. Twenty-first century skills including collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity are incorporated into the curriculum. All citizens in government, business, and civic entities must see themselves as partners in providing high-quality public schools. Ensure that our school facilities provide a safe and positive learning environment. Together, we can make a difference. The last section I have are the questions that the Education Commission had with regards to the referendum. I've got some arrows here, believe me, this was a lot of information to put together. With regards to the referendum, one thing that we were most excited about was the one-on-one technology package that Dr. Gunlock was talking to us. And we looked at first going, okay, why do we need one-on-one technology? And then we heard about the way that all of you have been thinking outside of the box. We understand that it would make the students more relevant to today's world, but what we didn't understand was a completely different way of learning. We heard about how some of the high school students could take their tablet home at night and how the lecture that they receive during the school day could be their homework at night, so when they come back to school, they could do the homework in the classroom and have applicable skills from what they learned. What a wonderful way to get the family involved in what the child will be learning. They would be able to hear the teacher and understand what the student was learning. There's a fact, and I don't know exactly what it is, but a student, if they get home and they don't understand the concepts, they will work on their homework for five minutes, which at that point, they put it away and there may be no one there to help them. This way, if they listen, or don't listen, to the lecture at night, they still come back and they still learn those applicable skills and work with teams and work with development and work with all of these relevant aspects of the classroom experience. That's pretty cool. I mean, that just completely turned it around for all of us about this one-on-one technology and why it was so important. That was pretty amazing and you look at those opportunities and they're going to be enhanced further and further in the future. What the Education Commission would like to see your answers about the referendum. We'd like to see stories presented through social media about why we need the referendum. We'd like to see that the administration is doing an efficient job in accomplishing these goals and we believe that that's relevant in the strategic plan that's posted every Monday, but we'd like to see bullet points. We'd like to see short stories. We'd like these stories to be shared. We want to see an end to losing our revenue to other districts because of opportunities that we may not be able to provide. We'd like a synopsis saying of what we've accomplished and what we would do in the future. We would like a survey of the Lakeside parents to see why they left, so we know that we are accurate when we say we have lost parents because of. We want to know that those are absolute facts. We want assurance with this referendum that we're not accepting the status quo. To accomplish the strategic plan, we need to do more than maintain. The community asked the school district to be better than they were. That takes money. We need to plan for the future. We want to see a list of what's being preserved with the dollar amounts. We want to see a list of what the additional dollars will buy us. We believe that the costs and expenses must be documented and presented as reality. We want to and need to educate the community with marketing. We need to have speaking points in layman's terms. We need to have community awareness meetings, just like we did with all the listening sessions with Ashgosh for Education. We would like to do the same thing with the referendum. As one of our committee members said, "We are a patient that needs medicine." With extended care, not just a quick shot in the arm, this is something that's going to take a while. And we were pleased to see recently that this is going to be a multi-year process. Initially, I believe it was a one-time process and we all said that can't happen because there are going to be needs and we need to be realistic with our community that this just didn't take one year to get to this point and it's not going to take one referendum to get out. And I think if we present many of these things logically, strategically, to our community, just like they did for the listening sessions, they will understand. We'd like to thank the school board, the administration, for allowing the community to be part of this process. While challenges exist, we truly believe that everyone is working toward a common goal. Everything relates back to the strategic plan, which allows focus and strategic results. We look forward to giving you another report from the Education Commission following our March meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Beth.
I'm sorry it took so long, but we have a lot to say.
It's quite all right.
Thank you.
We thank you for all of your support.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will go to number six, I guess. 2014-15 Budget Reconciliation Plan and Timeline, Sue Shnor and Mike Knoll.
Included in your packet was some information about what we envision the makeup of the budget reconciliation teams to be. This is very similar to what the place for the current year, 13-14. We also put a tentative calendar of dates on that schedule in the packet. We haven't exactly worked out what the activities will be at each session, but I'm sure it'll be structured very similar to the process last year, but just condensed greatly. I think they met over six nights last time and I think we're looking at doing it over three nights with a wrap-up session later. So I guess I would open it up to any questions or comments about the process. Stand to join in.
I would just remind board members that we would most appreciate, I've had one or two board members who have indicated to me that they're prepared with their identified citizens potentially to participate. We would like to, as early as Friday, because we're really planning for February 4th for our initial meeting, to be as courteous as we can for our citizen participants to get notice out to them. And if we could have board members supply those names to Sherry, that would be helpful because that process, our goal is again to have a group of citizens that are a slight majority of individuals through the process and it was a very helpful process last year in identifying priorities and this year, we look forward to the same participation. And if you're so fortunate as being able to recruit returnees, that will just speed up the process because we have less education to accomplish in that case of bringing individuals up to speed, but we're going to welcome all individuals that board members would recommend in. So that process, the target is for us to be able to present a list of the budget reconciliation reductions in a work session, one month from now, that being the first meeting in February, and for the board to then be able to ruminate on those issues and have action on those reductions on the second board meeting of February in order that we also have then a relevant 30 days for that list to be out in the community as part of the issue regarding the potential referendum. So it's critical that we identify the lists of what would not be there as a result of a failed referendum and what items will be retained as a result of a successful referendum and that we would have a full month to accomplish that in communication at that point in time. Without that list being generated, we would not be in a position to be specific and as Beth indicated, the downside consequences of a failed referendum need to be known by the community in preparation for that time. With that, are there any additional questions? We had good feedback from last year's experience with it and it is relevant that we engage the community once again, which is another strategic plan alternative.
Excuse me, I have a sinus issue tonight. What is the projected deficit that we would be looking at for 2014-15?
Two and a half million.
Okay. And can you, do you have data that would, because of the way the state counts students in that rolling situation, what would it look like possibly for 15-16?
I haven't projected out that far and the main reason I haven't is because that's the first year of a state biennial budget. And as volatile as that state budget has been over the last four years, it's really hard to, I mean, I can do a projection based on, you know, our revenue limit growth is like $75 per pupil. I could do a projection based on that $75, but I guess I haven't at this point just because of the volatility of not knowing what the state's going to do.
That seems like a wise choice to not spend your time on that right now. How much money was cut from this year's budget?
I think you originally projected like 3.4, but when it came right down to it, it was like 2.1 or 2.2, something like that.
Thank you.
And we should clarify that after the legislature adjourned, we were able to have the board, in the reprioritized order, reestablish and return some of the positions based on the prioritization that was established in the process.
I guess I have a question. We're reconstituting this community budget committee, right? Will they start, I mean, the last committee developed this list and we didn't go down the whole way on that list. Will they basically be starting where we left off on that list to see if they want to add things, take things off, move things around? What's the point of this new committee?
I would imagine we would share that list and see if there's any ideas on that list that are still viable ideas.
And last year, frankly, the list that was first with the group was augmented by other suggestions and ideas and so there could be additional pieces. We're also meeting next week administratively with the entire administrative team to look at identifying other issues that potentially could surface, that could be appropriate for consideration for that. So we will be working with, the list is not a locked-in set of items. It is flexible with the allowance for introducing other viable alternatives that could be considered by the committee. I should note the fact that as I have spent extensive time studying the last six, seven, eight years of budget reductions, the budget reductions that have occurred in the previous years were really cutting things on the periphery of direct instruction. We've been really fortunate in the fact that frankly, we have not dismantled the school district based on what we can offer, what the quality of our offerings are. We still have areas, we have unmet needs that may have been slightly the result of at least holding the line on new expenditures, but the reality is that in this timeframe and what we clearly discovered on the bubble last year, between 3.4 million and 2.1 million were programs that began to directly impact instruction. And frankly, we are on the cusp of facing those realities that these cuts, every year that we're going through this process, the cuts become more and more difficult because they impact in the classroom or will potentially act in the classroom. And so that's, as I analyze and having gone through, about 70% of my school administrative career, I have spent with dealing with budget reductions of varying sorts and I can tell you that in comparison to what has been cut in the district in recent years is very light-touch issues compared to the reality of what we could be facing with the next round or the round thereafter of budget reductions. round thereafter of budget reductions.
I guess.
There's no other, there's no board action required?
No, I know there's no board action required. I guess I was expecting more or perhaps I'm looking at the January 8th.
That relates to the alternative budget reduction, our next item on the agenda.
The word chop seven.
Oh, so that's, I'm sorry, I was clipped to this one. I was assuming it was part of the same. Okay, so this is basically just.
Just process to get to it. It is not part of the referendum question.
Anything more on this? It's a similar process to last year, I guess, and we'll talk about budget reductions obviously next. Alright, in that case, let's move on to potential referendum discussion. Sue Shonar.
I stand and turn to.
Right, sure. I would begin, in your packet of, actually delivered to you, I believe, on Saturday, you had a continued set of recommendations that would relate to a set of priorities that had been in the packet previously and it was continued discussion of looking at prioritization of placing $1.5 million as an offset to budget reductions that we just talked about, $1.6 million related to a technology investment and $850,000 related to the initiatives regarding study future, studying future programs, including the seed money for magnet schools. Based on what I know to be the fact that the board has been receiving considerable feedback, as has my administrative team and myself, I prepared an alternative for you to consider and relating to the issue and I intend to go through that word by word because I think it's an important part of the discussion. We have, and I label it thoughts, considerations, and alternative recommendations concerning referendum priorities for April 1st, 2014. The board will either consider later this evening or consider action at some point in the future before the 20th of this month. I wanted you to consider alternatives and based on my listening to both employees but the board of education in trying to find some common ground that clearly there is a major divide. All members of the school board and I have been receiving a plethora of electronic print communications along with multiple personal conversations concerning the administrative recommendations and school board discussions related to the recommendations during the past three school board work sessions. I have read all the correspondence directed to me and forwarded to me for my information. I've had many hours of conversations with teachers and teacher leaders. I've come to and understand the teachers' perspective related to the administrative recommendations of the proposed board action. Since May of 2012, and that's the month I was interviewed, I've learned extraordinary amounts about, from teachers, of information from teachers and administrators. In the past 18 months, I've spent hundreds of hours visiting schools, classrooms, and most frequently, listening to teachers and administrators. I have drawn the following conclusions from these observations and listening sessions. As a result of the Wisconsin Legislative, Legislature 2011 Act 10, our employees have faced, been faced with the loss of between 10 and 20% of their pre-2010, 2011 total income. In the years since 2010, 2011, the Oshkosh School District has continued to balance its budget through annual budget reduction in programs, supplies, equipment, employees, and in almost all cases, frozen compensation and reduced benefits. In each of those three years, the Oshkosh School District have closed their fiscal year with an annual surplus approximating $3 million. The fund balance has grown by nearly $9 million in the last three years. In each of those three years, the surplus operating funds were simply placed in, were placed in fund balance. Other than a handful of program restorations, no funds were returned to employees. At the same time, state and federal statutory changes mandating changes in student, teacher, and administrative accountability have created greater stress in educators' lives. The Oshkosh Area School District is also experiencing demographic changes led by increases in poverty and ethnic composition, a factor requiring new skills and expectation. The crux of the teacher and administrative concerns generated in the past year listed above are now the focus of the concerns expressed on the referendum priorities. Teachers and administrators believe that the $9 million increase in fund balance over the past three years have been accomplished on the backs of school employees. The intensity of these concerns is currently being communicated to you as school board members, the district executive team, and of course, me as superintendent. In parallel, since May of 2012, I have heard and understood the school board's desires related to the school district's needs and priorities. Although not always speaking in one voice, the school board priorities have included maintaining quality education programs, teacher morale, teacher quality, and teacher administrative retention, creating school choices, alternative education delivery systems, worldview-focused delivery systems, reducing the loss of students through open enrollment, maintaining efficient quality facilities, greater community engagement, increased school communication, balanced budgets, increased fund balance, and maintaining all neighborhood schools. All of these school board needs and priorities are contained in the Oshkosh Area School District Strategic Plan, which was approved last May. Quarterly updates have been provided, including an update that will be presented this evening. All of these priorities are fully appropriate, justified, and warranted in light of the Oshkosh School District being the fifth, one of the 15th largest school districts. Fundamentally, the students and their parents deserve the very best education now and in the future. In light of all these priorities, the school board, the community, and the employees must come to terms with the fact that since 1992, the Oshkosh School District has underfunded its educational program by an amount of $1,567 per student or thus $15,648,062 below the average of the 426 Wisconsin school districts based on 2012-2013 fiscal year. That's an amount of $15,648,000 annually below the state average. During the past 22 years, the school district, through active, passive, or intentional actions, have underfunded its operations by approximately $711,000 per year. That's taking that $15 million and dividing it up over those 22 years. The school district has been successful to date through a patchwork of actions that have kept the cuts generally away from the classroom and the majority of the valued educational programs. We are now at the threshold that significantly reduces, that significant reduces the educational program within the school district. Employment, recruitment, and retention in the school district has suffered because teacher and administrative compensation has fallen far behind neighboring school districts in northeast Wisconsin. Questions have been repeatedly asked. Will this referendum that proposes to raise $3,950,000 solve the district's financial problem? The answer is certainly not. It is a bite-sized portion that the community told us was affordable at this time. The proposed $3,950,000 would generate approximately 25% of the new revenue that need, that is needed to get the Oshkosh School District to the average level of funding based on 2012-2013 year data. Our employees, most especially our teachers and administrators, are concerned that the program, programs essential to maintaining quality education in the Oshkosh Area School District deserve the opportunity to be preserved by the action of citizens through a referendum. Our employees, most especially teachers and administrators, also support the district's investment in establishment of magnet schools and technology innovations needed to retain and recruit students to the school district, but not at the expense of existing programs. Our teachers and administrators seek to have a funding source to support alternative teacher compensation plan presently being studied. The district's executive team in collaboration with building administrators strongly support initiatives contained in the Oshkosh Area School District Strategic Plan. How may we accomplish all of these potential competing goals? The district's executive team and I would like to recommend the following to the board in order to assist in unifying the referendum effort within the school district and within the greater school district community. Recommendation would be as follows. Recommend referendum proceeds be allocated in the following way in year one. Proposed budget reduction restoration, $2.5 million. District technology plan, $1,450,000. That would be the total of $3,950,000. The use of fund balance in, from the past three years, based on looking at simply one year's worth of growth, I would still indicate and strongly recommend the board consider maintaining and building fund balance at two-thirds of what has been the available surplus at the end of year. Alternative teacher compensation, that we would allocate $500,000 from fund balance to accomplish that in its first year, and that magnet school startup expenses at $500,000 be considered as a fund balance expenditure. Based on this proposed plan, fund balance would continue to grow, the alternative compensation and new program initiatives would be funded into the future, the distribution of annual surpluses would be based on a one-third program improvement, two-thirds fund balance system subject to approval each year by future school boards. The above revised funding plan would respond to many of the individuals who have contacted the school board members, school board members, administrators during the past six weeks. With that, in conclusion, the preservation of quality existing programs responding to the needs and support of alternative compensation, planning the seeds for new school programs, all are included in this proposal. I look forward for your thoughts, discussion concerning this proposal, and the internal harmony within the school district. That concludes my set of recommendations. Attached to the board copies are sets of background data that would include that distribution. I'd like to just take a minute if we start with the first slide, working through the proposal, proposed referendum would be divided in two parts instead of three parts. $2,500,000 to match the anticipated budget reduction plan with a restoration. $1,450,000 to be used for technology plan, although originally scheduled to be at $1.6 million. Dr. Gunlock has indicated that there are modifications particularly at the primary level that could be done as alternatives to make it affordable within that annual allocation as opposed to the $1.6 million. Next. Want to focus a little bit more on how graphically our situation is. Oshkosh in total revenue is in blue. Our comparable school districts, comparable school districts are those of, within the region. The state average, the state average is $12,375 per pupil. And then, there's a whole set of our fellow large school districts across the state that would not necessarily, would not include those slightly larger than us. It certainly doesn't include Milwaukee or those that are, even Appleton is not included in the list. It would be our comparables there at $12,730 per student and that excludes La Crosse, which for some reason is an outlier in the fact that it, they're at an expenditure on an annual basis of about $14,000 plus per year. So, we just took, because it was such an outlier, we took La Crosse off of the list. Next.
That is the budget.
Okay, those are the pieces, so. We have also provided for the board, print versions of this, online versions of this, and the comparative data for the district. For like-sized districts, I probably should indicate what is included in that. Manitowoc, Sheboygan, Nina, Fond du Lac, Janesville, Eau Claire, Wausau, Stevens Point, and as we noted, we excluded La Crosse from that list. We also did comparisons with athletic conference and we also did comparisons with neighbors. But the most relevant data certainly is if we are going to be at a performing, high-performing district, being that far below the state average is a clear indicator of our limited ability to deliver on all the promises that we should have for our community. That, any questions? Do you have the others?
I have them up there.
They're up there. Okay. The additional spending to match that being required, if we look at the additional dollars that, you see the comparison again between Oshkosh, those comparables, the state average, and that comparable-sized school districts. At the present time, what we would accomplish by the proposed referendum, we would effectively get to 25% of the $15,648, the state average. We would make 25% of the progress, but that is the full allocation. That's what the community told us was affordable at this time and have repeatedly, in answering questions from individuals in the community who have continually say, "Well, tell me, Stan, that this is going to fix it, once and for all." No, it cannot fix it. You cannot make up, and you cannot expect the community to make up 22 years of drifting in one fell swoop. It's too big a bite to deal with and I think that's relevant, realistic, and what the Springstead study told us. The proposed distribution of, or use of fund balance, I am suggesting that at a rate that is at $3 million growth a year, I'm suggesting that for all the right fiduciary reasons on the part of the district, that two-thirds of fund balance should still go back, or two-thirds of surplus should still go back to fund balance. But on an annual basis, a reflection being, and we are certainly in that position for this year and potentially for two years into the future, to divide up the surplus fund balance that is there that could address certainly the alternative teacher compensation plan that is presently not funded, but it's very theoretical if we develop it, get it approved, get an agreement on it, but we have no funding source. Secondly, I believe very strongly that a portion of it should go to initiatives that would relate to magnet school innovation and those kind of studies to make the school district competitive. And that would be that distribution of the budget surplus. Questions on the part of the board or others that may be interesting?
If I got this right, Stan, what you're saying is that in the future with fund balance, that we would be taking out from what we've had over the last three years of our overage, we would take that out three years into the future at the ratio of what you.
At no greater than a million dollars.
Right, understood.
Okay. And we'd still be $6 million ahead of where we were in 2010-11.
At no greater than a million dollars.
Per year.
Per year.
So, he's just saying, taking two.
I guess I need to get straight in my head. I know that.
Well, this is one of my questions.
Well, this is what my question was about, so.
When you're talking about building fund balance and you're talking about use of fund balance funds, are you talking about using what is currently existing in fund balance, or are you talking about future budget surpluses, the divvying up percentages of potential future budget surpluses?
Talking about, because this board cannot commit itself to future board action, and future board action could be, what I'm suggesting is that we would use from this last $1 million each for the next three years, decided upon not tonight or not in next year at this time, another million from fund balance to deal with a recapturing of what was not, was underspending by the district for each of the three previous years. And into the future, I would suggest that a good practice would be that we identify, if we have a surplus when we close the books, that we have a standard good practice of two-thirds growing the fund balance and one-third being, assisting in both future development of the district, that includes the whole issue of research and building cases for magnet schools, and secondly, for teacher compensation beyond the standard that, and following through on the compensation plan that's being developed at the present time.
Okay, I'm gonna, sorry to do this, I'm gonna ask it again. For the 1415 fiscal year, you're talking about using the 3.95 as basically two and a half million of it to go towards-
Offsetting budget.
Offsetting the budget reduction. So that basically eliminates the-
Budget reconciliation.
The budget reconciliation that we were just talking about.
Right.
So there really would be no reason to hold.
Well, we can't pass it.
Well, yes, of course there wouldn't.
What if it doesn't pass?
It has to be, it has to be-
Okay, okay. So we're holding that basically based on the fact that the certain budget cuts will have, they will still be prioritizing which budget cuts will happen if a referendum does not occur.
Right.
Beth, one of Beth's questions, what is this going to cut if it didn't happen?
Right, okay. So the proposed budget reduction restoration basically offsets 100% of the deficit. Okay? And then there's $1,450,000 that goes towards trying to get one to one.
Right. First year of multiple years for one.
And that's the first year. On that same first year, you want to take, you want to take a million dollars out of fund balance?
Of present fund balance, not anticipated, but fund balance-
When you say fund balance would continue to grow, we're actually, we're going to shrink the fund balance by 3 million over three years.
Yes, but it would continue to grow. It would, in retrospect, had we been doing this from year one, when 2011, '12, we would have, we would have invested back a million dollars instead of growing by two, 3 million, we would have grown by two. And each year, the net effect would be, at the end of a three-year cycle like this, we will have grown fund balance by $6 million instead of $9 million.
But potentially, for, what we're talking about doing here is removing $3 million from fund balance, a million dollars a year for the next three years?
Yeah. And what I, and what I put the proviso in, that I would never recommend that the board take action on three consecutive years at one time, you would do with it because you and succeeding boards should have control of that each and every year as you would approach that.
And then I guess I'm still, when it says building fund balance, two-thirds, 2 million, what is that?
That is just simply to indicate that already is there. It's 3 million is there right now. And what I'm dealing with is a potential subtraction, because we did not allocate those resources elsewhere, we generated $3 million towards fund balance as of officially June 30th of this past summer, when we closed books. And what we'd be doing is dealing with a future net effect of 2 million versus 3 million.
How do you see, do you see a differentiation? I guess, what do you see in year two?
In year two, we would again be looking at what initiatives-
This part would say the same.
Yeah, that would be near the, be the same. The allocation of resources based on future funding and ability to turn back, bearing in mind if we were fortunate and returned X number of students, we could gain a million dollars through that. We have an open-ended issue with where the legislature might be. It is virtually impossible to predict future. The other is lots of discussions about what we can do with offsetting, right now, Sue, please correct me if I'm wrong, $1.9 million of our projected deficit is relating to really 10% increase insurance for next year. What can we do to deal with that curve the year, for the future years? And that's part of the issue. The vast majority of what is eating us up financially is ever-increasing costs on health insurance.
So this 500 would go towards compensation?
Right. Would go towards, not base compensation, because that's already calculated in into the budget. Would go to being able to fund incentives that are being developed in the study.
In all of this, is there provisions for something with the South Side, since that's been hanging out there for a year?
The South Side issue is really meeting with the folks on the survey that's been on hold, meeting with them in fact on Friday. That process will be well underway, and I'm meeting with the PTO, I believe, on the 16th. Barb?
I'm confused by two of these slides. So forgive me and considerate of me. We can start with the one that's on the screen. Labelled additional spending to match comparables, is that a total amount? Is that a yearly amount? Is that an average? What is that?
That's how much your annual budget would have to go up to spend at your comparable, at those levels. So like, if you just use the state average one, the district would have to spend 15 million more every year to spend at the state average.
Okay.
And bearing in mind that roughly in terms of 15 million, 6, 3 million, 950, is roughly 25% of 15 million, so. So what we'd be doing is dealing with a 25% bite-sized bit of that deficit.
Thank you, that clears that up. Okay. Now if we could go back to the last slide, I think I have some similar questions to that of Mr. Wiedenhoff. Okay, you talked about taking possibly a million a year for three years, correct?
Okay.
So then the green section up there, excuse me, two-thirds of the budget surplus directed to the fund balance. So if you take, are you saying that you're taking a million, but two-thirds of it you're putting back into the fund balance?
No. What he's saying is that in the future, if we have overages, we should put a percentage in-
Okay.
And a percentage towards, and a percentage towards.
So that might be labelled, excuse me, proposed distribution of future budget surplus.
Correct. Yeah, it's really not what we're talking about for this one.
But I think you use it as a template.
A template for the future, because frankly, if there's something I have heard more, and we have lots of those folks who have spoken to me in the audience today, if I've heard more over the last 18 months, is the issue that we are, we are sitting here watching the district grow fund balance and not dealing with either return on programs or coming back to that, everybody, since we are a nonprofit organization, you can't speak in terms of profit. But in terms of underused expenditures, is, which really is under-spending of dollars, we are in the position that we were fiduciarily good, and individuals, including virtually all of our employees, got by with something less because we didn't spend at the level that we could have. And I think that's really the issue of a perception of equity and fairness potentially to share in that. I'm absolutely a strong proponent of fund balance increases. In my previous position, I was a party to growing that by seven, eight, nine million dollars over nine years, but that was a progression that occurred in smaller bits, as opposed to $3 million a year or $9 million in three years.
Do you feel that this proposal, over time, because I know it will take time, will address the compensation issue that we have?
I think in the future, one of the things that if we were dealing with in over the next three-year period, that I truly believe in magnet school and startup and those initiatives, that can be an adjustable figure that may not take $500,000 each year, that the $500,000 for alternative compensation could grow, and because we will not need the same $500,000 three years in a row for feeding two or three, or maybe even four, new magnet schools.
Okay.
Because as I have constantly stressed, that the issue of magnet schools should be, yes, they are costly to start up, to equip, to establish, but we want to be careful so that we don't have a premium on a child who goes to a magnet school that we have to subsidize into the future, and that creates inequity across the district.
Right, because as you know, I emailed you. I responded to every email I got from a community member. And the themes were that whereas everybody supported technology, absolutely, it was clearly supported, but not over compensation, not beyond, compensation had to be addressed first. And do you feel like this is doing that?
I think it's a, it's not 100% of what we may need, but we haven't seen the plan yet, but I think a half a million dollar start is considerably better. Bearing in mind in the base budget, we build in the inflationary increases so that we don't end up with being at zero. We plan for, our future budget projections, including next year, includes an estimate of what the inflationary authorized rate will be, so that's built into the budget. We're talking about supplemental compensation that is certainly authorized also by law under Act 10, that we are working on the structure to find an appropriate funding mechanism for that.
Because what I gathered from when I was reading all the emails, and I talked to several people on the phone, that it seems like to be like a two-part piece, like there's this operational issue, and then there's this innovation, technology issue. And so how do you, how do we create a referendum that the community will see that, that we're taking care of what we need to take care of?
Right.
And we can begin to address some of these innovation, technology desires.
Yeah, and because the, the, two potentially politically less marketable pieces are within the board's hands by way of operationally using fund balance, you are effectively backing away from what could be a negative side. We still have individuals within the community-
Right.
-who think in spite of all the facts-
Right.
-that our employees are overcompensated-
Right.
-and we don't want to put that on the vote because that's really not true, but it is not, it is something that I don't believe should be a part of that. But to maintain programs that serve children, that is crucial part, an important part of that, and that's where the $2.5 million, which is also job preservation, it's program preservation, but number one, it's delivering a quality program at least the level we presently are delivering at. And that's, that to me is the critical piece. But for us to overcome and to turn ourselves around and being, not just with marketing, you have to market with substance.
Right.
We have to deal with the turning around to deal with creating initiatives in partnership, not only the technology side, but the other initiatives in partnership with our teachers and our principals, to create an environment that becomes an attractive alternative for individuals to want to attend those schools and to be a party to that, and to effectively gain more students back in the school district. And that raising enrollment is the fastest and quickest way to creating a better financial picture. There, you know, regardless of, even at our low number, you know, at 10 students make $100,000. And so it's critical that, you know, that we counterbalance that act as quickly as possible.
In the deficit that was done through PMA model, right?
I know, I did it.
Okay, so I was wondering, did you include in that projection increases CPI?
Yeah, CPI increase.
What was it?
It actually went 2%.
Okay.
If you look at the web, the WRC website right now, they don't have it projected out to July 1st, but it's about 1.7 right now.
Okay. So that's included in the two and a half million?
Yes.
So we can assume that if this-
If we approve the referendum.
And if it succeeds, that then teachers would be compensated at least-
At least the CPI.
To CPI.
And it puts the 10% health insurance increase in there as well.
Which we're gonna see. There's really no doubt.
Well, because we have a second-year guarantee with-
So we can plan.
So it is 10%.
So it is, it could be less than 10%, I doubt it, because our experience is still there, but we're, we have a 10% reg guarantee.
Okay.
So our future is much more predictable next year because we know the second year of what the legislative action is, we know what insurance is, and we have a margin there that's built in that, you know, and if we look at inflation, the likelihood that CPI index, growing considerably, but we're at least at 2% in its plan.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Sue, right now, for 1314, our total expenditure is 143,236,520 or something to that effect. Obviously, we won't know until we actually get there, but that's what we've said it's going to be. And currently, our fund balance is what?
It's like 16 million, 17 million, something like that.
I can look at it.
It's over 10%.
I've got it right here, and it's-
Of the, okay.
Okay.
It's like 12 or 13%. I have the number right off the top of my head.
16 million.
I think it's 16 million.
Okay, and what, in three years, or even next year, I guess, what do you expect, what are you predicting our total expenditures to be for the 1415 year?
To me, what, well, I think that, you mean what our budget will go up?
Right. What are you predicting for our budget?
Well, the two and a half million deficit is what is, so if, I don't know how to say this.
Well, we've, I mean, we've been reducing and reducing, but our expenditures always go up because health insurance goes up and other things go up.
Our revenues are only going up by 400,000 next year, but our expenses are going up.
Okay, so we're gonna be very close to 143 million next year. We're gonna be 144 million, basically, because we're, okay, so, and if it continues at that rate over the course of three years, we won't, we'll probably be like 146 million, but not much.
Right.
I mean, it's not like we're gonna be at 150 or 160 million, it's gonna be like 146.
No, it's not growing that exponentially.
Okay, so 15% of 146 million, I guess, is what?
Well, 10% is- Well, I look at, that 146 is the entire budget, that's food service, rec department, debt service, that's everything. If you just look at Fund 10 and Fund 27, that's about 117 million right there. So the-
But I believe our policy says of our total budget, correct?
So it's 21 million.
So we need to be at about 21 million in-
To be at 15%.
At, in order to-
All it says in there though, Matt, is strive. We just, we just rose that, generated that up to strive to 15%. It was 10 to 12, and now it's a strive for that. And the reason was, of course, that what is in the last four years, you went from 189,000 in annual interest that we're giving to the banks for interest on short-term loans and stuff, and that's-
When I started, we, when I started, we were actually making money by-
Right.
And that's no longer true, we can't do that anymore.
Right, but I'm, you know, so it, and then it's- But I'm, you know, so it's down around 100,000 now. So we ended up saving about 100,000 dollars a year in interest payments as that fund balance started going up.
Correct. And I guess I'm trying to figure out where we're going to be in three years. If we take our fund balance from 16 million down to 13 million, and we're going to be at 145 million for our total budget expenditures, we're going to end up at even less than 10%.
We're really only committing to the one, looking at one year. Each year, you can look at what you're in, your end surpluses and decide whether you want to stick with that million or not.
But this is the, this is the plan that's being projected.
Yeah. The nightmare, I have never seen a school district budget that goes out more than two years within a biennium that is not a walking disaster plan. I can tell you that because we don't control our revenues.
I don't believe it.
And that's really the issue that I think we have to be very attentive to, that every, every budget that goes the third, fourth, and fifth year out is effectively walking the plank. Because no one would have anticipated in 2011, 405 dollar, 450 dollar drop in aid per student.
For myself, I guess I think this is a good compromise. We had 850,000 dollars on an original concept that we were looking at with the referendum proposal. The 850,000 was going to go for magnet schools, new innovations. That has been removed to be able to crank it up to 2.5 million, which covers, completely covers our next year's budget deficit, at least projected. And I think that would make sense and resonate with the community because if they have given us a finite number that they seem comfortable with, that they would kick in an additional revenue, that we should try to preserve the programs. And as Stan was saying, that we're down to pretty much, we're cutting into more jobs and we're cutting into the actual programming and stuff itself. So I think that, and as you brought it, Kelly, in the second year, if we had originally had an 850 number on there, the second year of Stan's proposal, that teacher compensation model, one could expat late forward, that that should actually go up an additional 150 to 200,000 dollars because you would, if we were sticking with the 850,000 for innovation, you'd use 500 for the first year, 350 the next year, then the other 150,000 would go into adding more to that teacher compensation model. So I think that it's kind of like bite-sized pieces. I'd like to say, Stan, thank you very much. I kind of asked for this in the, how much that over the years are we behind our surrounding districts by not having taxed to what our limit should have done.
Well, I think too, what I heard from community members that called me was that they didn't feel like a referendum would be looked on very favorably if we were going to ask for money and then still cut. That was made clear to me in several conversations, that that just doesn't make sense.
Part of what I tried to look at, and I can tell you that the last six weeks have been the, I probably have not had, I've had sleepless nights trying to deal with piecing these together, and I've dealt with it. And I was trying to deal with fairness and all the listening that I've been doing and understanding full well that we have to allocate resources yet for innovation and change. Not just putting a slightly different cover on the same book is not acceptable. And that's, that's part of what we have to struggle with and part of what my hope would be in looking at at least what we know to be a future, and if the board supports it in year two and year three, is having the resources both to respond to a new alternative compensation program for teachers, and that's an issue of retention and holding on to folks, but while at the same time, generating a set of alternatives that make us more attractive to our present residents and let alone being attractive to those who might be residents of neighboring districts. Each of those are critical aspects of that. I counted back. This is, this would be about the ninth or 10th referendum I've been a party to, and putting budgets together over time and budget reductions. I've lost count, but it would be in the neighborhood of 24, 25 budget reductions for school districts that I've been a party to having to put together. And this is really a product of really both the reality of what I know on school finance, and I'm so grateful to Sue and regarding these colorful charts, the raw data that Sue and I put together, where Dave and Andy worked quickly to put it in a graphic form, and we are grateful to them for their next step of contribution from the standpoint that it did. The bar graphs show, and pie charts show data that is far more visible than if we just gave you numeric comparisons. That's a helpful piece. Arb.
Just smart questions, Matt. I know we've spent a lot of time talking about, I guess my favorite graphic right now is this last one, the future budget surplus. That's that sixth, that one sixth fraction of the budget surplus to alternative teacher compensation. We've talked primarily about teacher compensation. What plans do we have to address compensation issues with secretaries, paraprofessionals, custodians?
We have, we have base compensation built into the budget for all employees. What was mandated by and what is really the issue that was effectively destroyed by Act 10 was the recognition of other forms of compensation, including lane change and other professional growth that is being addressed by the committee. Those structures have not generally existed with clerical and secretarial positions. Longevity and issues of their job classification have generally been the opportunity. Positions in the district are classified in, based on their level of responsibility and performance. And so we have base increases. We have not been in the position to deal with developing a, and required to develop an alternative compensation plan for our support staff. And that is something that long-term future, I would, I would want us to perfect and do well what we're doing for teachers and administrators in the future before we tackle, because our issue is we're not losing support staff. Our support staff are long-term stable employees in the district. But our licensed professionals, we lose on a regular basis, and that's where we need to look at addressing alternative compensation and incentives to stay first.
Right. And I know that we had a report earlier indicating that a primary reason for teachers leaving for other districts was salary. And I believe that to be true. However, I also believe it's true that when you see an exodus of administrators, and I know that's borne off by a study I heard about this fall from the UCEA, that once you see administrators start to leave, then you see the next level of employees, which by looking at compensation only is probably your teachers. Because the working conditions have changed, the relationship with supervisors has changed, the climate and culture of the building may have changed. So while I believe that salary certainly is an issue, when you have those other issues, namely the climate and the culture and the working conditions and relationships with superiors, if those aren't solid, then the money becomes very attractive or a good reason for people to go. So I think if we can't do something in the short run for secretaries and paraprofessionals and custodians, we do need to look at the working conditions and relationships with superiors and so on, supervisors, so that we are retaining those quality individuals as well.
John?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because it's kind of where I was going. I mean, I'm sitting here looking at these numbers, and I am sure, like the rest of you, I'm trying to get a feel for what the human impact is going to be in all this. I mean, the numbers look good. I mean, so just to be clear, I'll just kind of continue with where you were. So you're saying that we do have some, something built into this to raise our starting salaries for teachers? That's planned into the?
Yeah, that's planned into the half a million dollar use of fund balance.
Okay. Because one of the hardest things that's been for me in the last couple of years is to hire people at 328 and then leave them sit there year after year, knowing that each year they're coming back as better teachers. And also, knowing that we're going to, we've been asking them to pay more for their health insurance, more for their pension fund and all that kind of stuff. And I'm glad that, Mr. Mack, you put that in here in your summary, how much it was. It's quite a large number. I don't think people in the community understand the kinds of sacrifices, the human level that people have been making in this district.
That's a good point.
Can I make a point, John, though? You say that the 500,000 is going, is what we would use to take into account market, what's it, market correction, bringing people salaries up, but we're only talking a half a million dollars, and we have over 800 just teachers, am I right?
Right. It doesn't solve it immediately in one year.
Right. Which is really only 600 bucks per person. So I'm not sure that, did you get that, John?
Yeah, but that's on top of the, but the-
Well, that's what I was asking. That's on top of the CPI.
The current salary.
I know. I was just teasing.
It doesn't seem enough to me.
But it's not going to go to all 800, and there's going to be a system, and we don't know what that is, and it hasn't been created yet.
We wait, we wait.
Yeah, we have no idea. I mean, I haven't been-
To say that teachers are going to get 328, I don't think is accurate. That's what I had a problem with.
Say it again.
When you were saying we need to bring teacher salaries up, you know, I'm not sure that that was totally accurate because with a half million, I'm not sure that that's going to be enough to do that. That's all I said.
This is, all of these pieces, again, are labeled as really starting points for a fix, a major fix job that needs to be done. That's because, you know, we're only getting, at the very most, if we're successful with referendum, getting 25% towards just being average. And when you put it in those terms, 25% of the way towards being average is a pretty small step.
So how do you reconcile spending 1.4 on technology when teachers might get 600 more a month on their salary? I don't know how to reconcile that with the people that are going to email me. I don't know how to make sense of that. I know it's bite-sized, but is there some way to-
It's the issue of, first of all, honoring and recognizing the work of the people who have put together the technology plan to respond to the changing needs and to remain competitive. If we sit back and do not invest in that direction in virtually all of the districts, and I'm not sure, I asked Dr. Gunlock to forward to you at some point in the near future, a list of what our neighbors have done and are doing. And for us to sit on our hands and say, well, this too will pass, is utterly putting our head under the-
I don't think that's what I'm doing.
Yeah. But I think, but I think the issue there is that we're attempting to deal with that investment. I can tell you that I would not move looking at beyond the technology issue. I would not, I would not slide additional compensation into a referendum.
Nope. Not asking, not asking you to do that. I'm just trying to reconcile it-
Right.
-in my mind.
It's to remain competitive, it's so that we can be innovative, it's so that we can be more engaging, and so we can try to touch more kids and get in touch with them. There's a thousand reasons for the technology. It's not as easy as a simple number that our deficit's 2.5 million. And what's the right number? You know, 1 million, 1 to 1, 2 to 1, I don't know. So, you know, you've got to kind of dance around a little bit-
Right.
-at the end of the day.
Sure.
I don't, there's, we can no longer, I heard something on the radio this morning. They were bashing the referendum and-
Oh, really?
And they, and the comment was, so we can give all kids Apple computers. And I thought, you know, I'm not sure, I feel like, you know, that I'm one of those young kids where I'm looking at my parents saying, you know, but I got to have that. And in the end, there's a lot of reasons why we have to have technology, and technology has touched every industry except this one. So, you know, as much as we want to maybe keep it out, and I'm not saying that we do, maybe some people do.
And I'm not about keeping it out.
I'm just telling you, yeah.
I'm not about keeping it out. I'm trying to reconcile spending, and I know you can't put it in a, I even wrote to people and said, the community has kind of made it clear that compensation in a referendum will kill it. And, but it's just difficult to reconcile putting that much money in innovation and not being, not do it. I'm saying. It's just a tough one.
I understand, I understand, Kelly.
Okay, thanks. That's, that's all I'm saying.
To our first presenter tonight, Beth Lyman. And I think this has relevance to conversations. We need to relate the technology and the hard work that the committee put in on this to student learning. And to her question, I'm trying to make some notes here, but she spoke much faster.
The metrics?
Right. What will the dollars buy us? And I look at that in terms of what are the students going to know and be able to do? How are they going to be better? And her question, how will the district be better than it was? And it has to be, those have to be seen in my mind, as a curriculum person, as a tool. They're not the end. And we need metrics and other concepts she talked about. So how are the students going to be better? How is student learning and achievement going to be better? Are they going to be better prepared for the world of work or post-secondary because they have this tool? It's not just that they have the tool. She explained how it could be used in terms of the lectures, and I understand that. That's quite, I find that quite exciting in tying the parents in. But how is that going to improve student learning? And so I'm very concerned and will be really anxious to see the metrics of putting these devices in the hands of children. And I really would also like to see, as I've stated before, and maybe it's out there and I'm just not aware of it, I want to see the scope and sequence of the curriculum. What's going to be taught when, how is this going to make a difference for the, what's the first grader going to be able to do with this? That the high school student is going to take that to a much more sophisticated level. And how are we going to measure the results on student learning? If we can't do that, then I'm not sure that it makes sense to buy these just for the sake of buying them. And I'm not saying that's what the referendum is about.
But you have to make that clear.
But I think that's what we're talking about. How is this going to change student learning? How are these students going to be better prepared for, again, what Beth Lyman talked about in terms of these connections with the community and making sure these students are prepared for the internships and the apprenticeships and going on to tech college and being prepared for the military or going directly into the workforce after high school? If we can't do that with this money, then I'm not sure it was well, I know it would, the perception in the community will be that it wasn't well-spent.
David?
Yes. Also, I mean, if you're wondering about more technology user interface, I know, I'm kind of a techie myself. So I think partly, you can't really group kids based on giving them technology. It's all individual. Like, moved me my Mac when I got it sophomore year. I had AP US history, and it was really convenient because the standard of getting a computer is you can type your notes. Great. But I think with, depending on the kid, I found out different tools you can do and kind of coordinate with. I use like the Siri option to like, just like, instead of making note cards by hand, I just like literally say it to the computer, it'd make it and save me about two hours. So a little input is like, if you give a kid maybe a tablet or something- So a little input is like, if you give a kid maybe a tablet or something, it depends on what they personally are going to do with it, whether it's going to be more expansive or it's just going to be opening apps. So I, I definitely took the technology to my advantage and tried to figure out different other things to do with it.
I agree with that. Like, he might use a computer, but I'm still one that sits and makes notes cards for two hours. Like, it's all based on, really, if you want to do the one-to-one, that's really how it's going to affect the child is one-to-one. I mean, they might not get any use of it at all and still be the most intel, a very intelligent student. It's just kind of how they use it to their advantage or their disadvantage.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see it tied to improving our reading scores.
Start there.
I, I think David makes a good point. It could be a learning tool. It's also a teaching tool. It's a pedagogical tool. But, you know, I, and I'm not, you know, again, like with Kelly, I'm not against the technology.
No, I'm not against it.
Maybe I was very encouraged of how excited Beth was getting over the idea of flipped classrooms. I mean, you know, and there's been really good research showing that, yeah, that does lead to improved learning from part of students. But I keep coming back to the, you know what? The, the, the technology is only as good as the teachers. And, you know, we...
That's my point.
That's your point, okay. So, so we, we have to make sure that, that, you know, we're, you know, as a school board, our primary concern is, is the students and the, the learning that they're doing. The, the next layer out from that, what is it? Is it the technology or is it the teachers? I think it's the teachers. Okay? And then maybe the next layer off from that is the technology. So in my head, that's, that, those are my priorities. And, yeah, I want to put, you know, good teaching tools in the hands of the teachers, but I want to have really good teachers. And I'm, you know, I'm still very concerned that we are losing a lot of our good, young teachers. And so they come to Oshkosh for a few years, we give them lots of professional development and then off they go. So, you know, whatever we come up with here, we've got to capture those good teachers and keep them.
And that's why the discussion of referendums is not going to be ending with this year.
Right. I don't know if you know the answer to this, Sue, but what would it take to market correct all the salaries? If we wanted to do it right today, what would, what's that number?
Oh, I would have no idea.
Okay.
I, I, you'd first have to define what market correct is.
Okay. But, okay, so we know that we're fifteen million below in, in expenses.
Mm-hmm.
And we know that we're two thousand below in per pupil expenditures.
Right. I don't know if we've ever looked and compared our salary schedule to others based on benchmarks and where we're low, or, I mean, I...
I'm just talking ballpark. And I guess the answer I'm looking for is, is it more than four million? Could we do it?
Oh, I would guess so. Yeah, because like, one of the things we looked at is, what if we just knock off the first four steps and move everybody to step four? That's over seven hundred thousand, just there, that alone. So...
Let me suggest something that if, if we look at, and this would include all employees.
Okay.
But we know that about eighty percent of our expenditures is, is tied in salary.
Right.
If we took eighty percent of, of fifteen million, we kind of know a little bit proportionally where, where we would need to be.
So about twelve, eleven or twelve?
Twelve million. Because I think that's, for me, the simplest way of approaching it is if, if, continue the pattern of which would be, because we are a labor-intensive organization, we're not heavy into machinery, we're much more heavy with people.
But that's where I'm trying to get to. If fourteen, or if eleven million is so far out of our league at this point, then what do we do with the four million? Do we do all four million into teachers and, or do we do less in tech? And so that's where we're at. I think that's what I'm hearing everybody here say.
Well, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, but that's where I get caught up because it seems like the community might not support that.
I haven't heard anything from the community on technology.
No, I've just heard it on compensation. And so when you said, take the four million and...
So it's a fixed...
And you'd say, take the four million and divide it up, you know, or just whatever. I don't know if we have a community that would, would do that.
Yeah, politically, that's terrible strategy.
And I also don't think a community would support only teacher comp.
Pardon?
My understanding is that the, the current maintenance allocation or budget includes some referendum funds, which end this year, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I believe that figure was one point three million, is that correct?
Correct.
Over five years.
Okay. What will be the impact on the maintenance department and the maintenance of our facilities if that one point three million is gone and we don't have anything in this referendum for maintenance of our facilities?
Well, they have a budget.
Well, they have a budget beyond that and, and I'm, you know, I'm not going to pretend that, that everything is going to be okay now that their budget's going to be one point three million dollars less, but, but this district is so, it was my understanding that this district is so far behind on maintenance that just being able to add that one point through the last five years really, really helped. And then those energy exemption that you did, the twenty-five million the last two years...
Twenty-two, yeah.
That really, really helps. So, you know, is it going to be a loss to their department? Yes. But I think they, that really helped them to catch up and then maybe as we continue to fix down the road, that that would be a consideration to take in mind again.
Yeah. We do have a pressure relief valve with the energy piece that the board can consider in the future that we don't have in our instructional operation other than referendum.
Thank you.
Yes, back to the, just want to make one point on with compensation. You know, the two point five million that we need to balance this budget is basically giving all employees a CPI increase and, and taking care of their benefit increases. So if it does pass and you don't have to cut two and a half million, that means all employees will, you, will get an increase of the CPI. We are maintaining the level of benefits that they have right now and giving them that additional half a million on top of that. So you would really be looking at three million dollars in additional compensation for your, for all your employees under this plan.
But in reality, it is, the cuts would be accomplished not by cutting benefits and salaries.
Right.
It would be eliminating student programs.
Correct.
And that is what we offer. That's, that is the unfortunate trade-off.
Right.
And so we will have X number of people employed who next year would not be otherwise employed.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Good discussion.
Well, thank you. I, myself, I definitely want to see us head towards one-to-one for reasons that I've stated before. And I, two, was in agreement that going and asking for a three point nine five million dollar per year referendum, while we still had to cut a million dollars a year, was probably poor policy on our part. The idea that we would come before you today and, and vote in favor of going to the taxpayers for referendum and come back here next week and start deciding what we're going to cut. We're still going to come back and have to decide that, you know, obviously, as was indicated earlier, but the idea that we wouldn't reconcile the two completely, I think was a, was going to be a major piece of discussion tonight if you hadn't presented what you did. I, I am concerned about the fund balance, the idea that we're going from something that is within our, our thirteen percent that we have now down to below what we've agreed on as, as a recommended amount. Obviously, I think that this, this could harm us in the future in that I could see that, obviously, it could change the borrowing, it could change the, the percent of interest rate at which we borrow. And it could also leave us somewhat open if we did suddenly have a disaster like we did back in oh-six or oh-seven when we had to dip into fund balance. But...
But that's, that's assuming that the fund balance is not going to grow.
Correct. That's assuming that the fund balance is not going to grow.
In the last three years, we, we have had these overages.
We have. And I am, I'm happy for the overages. You know, we've had some trouble explaining the overages. And to forecast continued overages, I don't think is, is in Sue's plan. You don't expect, I mean, obviously, you, you can't, as, as you have continued to say, you're only talking about two percent of an overall budget. And so you, you know, we'd certainly rather have it work out in our favor at the end of the year than have it work out the other direction. That would be a disaster. And if, you know, we manage to be within two percent of our, of our projected budget, that's fantastic. But I'm also anxious to see a South Side solution. And I am looking towards those TIF dollars that are coming our way and what we might do to create a South Side solution with them. I was thinking that that, along with some of the TIF dollars that have come in this year, which I'm assuming at this point we've got...
Mm-hmm.
Would help to create a South Side solution if we had to dip into fund balance for that specifically because it was a one-time item. I was looking towards that as, as a possibility, knowing that we were at thirteen percent. You know, in three years, when we're looking at that money, which is about the correct time when that TIF will, or when that TID would begin to pay off, I think now we may be looking at a choice of, well, do we need to put that in fund balance and leave it there in order to get us back up to where we need to be as opposed to creating the South Side solution? Those things are disconcerting, but at the same time, I, I am fully aware that going to referendum and continuing to cut another million dollars a year was poor policy on our part. Having said my piece, Steve, we haven't heard from you, anything out of you this evening?
No.
Thought I'd put you on the spot for a second.
No.
All right. In that case, I guess we will move on to, let's see, number two, Oshkosh Strategic Plan Quarterly Update. It's the middle school schedule?
The amendment was to switch, is this seven, two, two and three are now being listed?
Oh, I see. So number four, middle school schedule revisions, Julie Mosher.
And joining me are our five middle school principals. Lisa McLaughlin from South Park, Jay Jones from Tidler, Phil Marshall from Western Stanley Middle School, Cindy Olson from Merrill Middle School, and Jill Pascharella from Trager Middle School is, how we didn't anticipate being up at the table right at this second. So, well, good evening and I'm thankful that we're, we are up at this point in time. A couple of weeks back, right before winter break, we had submitted a proposal to give some additional information to the education committee about a middle school proposal, a change to the schedule that we are calling the, the Expanded Wheel. Currently, at the middle level, we have exploratory courses in sixth grade. Sixth graders take four quarters, one each of art, family, consumer science, technology and engineering, and world language. And so the world wheel comes from those, those four quarters that sixth graders are currently taking. What we're proposing is to take those four exploratory quarters and expand them into semester courses so that students experience the same wheel, those same four exploratory courses, but rather than a quarter each, they would experience them for a semester over grades six and seven. So that's why we're calling it the Expanded Wheel. Because that's been a question, why are you calling it that? So why the, why the Expanded Wheel? Why are we, why are we asking to go to that? In a, we're trying to make middle school scheduling more efficient, predictable, and getting students into electives for longer periods of time. We've been experiencing over the past two years especially, some difficulty with our master scheduling and being able to predict staffing and getting students into the choices that they're making for electives. So they're not getting into their first or second choice courses. We know for sure at Trager Middle School, this was a, was a big problem this year. Students would request to be in art and then they would have an alternative as tech and engineering or family consumer science. They weren't getting in any of those and having to go and were just placed wherever their schedule landed. And we want students to be in their choices. We want students to be able to predict their schedule. We want families to be able to know where their students are actually going to be in courses when it comes to the start of the school year. Also, we have five small middle schools. And having a small middle school is, is a good thing because the students know each other, the teachers are able to know their, to be able to know their students. But what's happening is it's resulting in some of our courses not being offered or not being run. For example, there's a course, Art That Pays, that has run, I believe, at Trager Middle School, but has not run at the other middle schools because the number, just the number of students is not supporting that. And so we want to be able to offer things and not have it because it's due to low enrollment. So by putting this in place, we're going to be able to get students into more of those exploratory courses. So what does this, what does this look like? The five middle school principals and curriculum instruction assessment has been working on this proposal. And students and families aren't going to see a huge change, but a little bit. In sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, of course, they're going to be taking their four core classes. And if you look at the graphic, one, offerings one, two, three, and four are your core classes. So every student's going to have literacy, every student's going to have social studies, math, and science. In sixth grade, we are continuing with the double literacy blocks. You're going to be getting a hundred minutes of literacy each, each day in sixth grade. We are going to continue with PE and music every other day. And students would have a choice of their music, orchestra, choir, and band, as they do now. And where the difference is, instead of doing once again those four exploratory quarters, they're going to be taking a semester of art exploration and then teen life or family consumer science or an exploratory course in family consumer science for a semester. So they'll, they'll rotate through the semesters. In seventh grade, once again, it'll stay the same. But what we're proposing is that PE will be opposite of health, which it currently is. Students are taking a semester PE and a semester of health in seventh grade. But this also could open up the door for doing an AB schedule with PE and health so that in sixth grade, they have music and PE every other day. They could have potentially PE and health every other day with this. Then here's where their choices come in. They could choose to take a music, continue on with band, orchestra, or choir. Or if they chose not to continue on in music, they would take an art, family, consumer science elective. So they would have a semester of art and a semester of family consumer science. That, that would be their choice. And then everybody in seventh grade would be required to take a technology and engineering course or a world language exploratory course. Where we're still doing some work is on that world language course because currently to get the equivalent of level one Spanish or a, a level one language, you have to take a semester in seventh grade and then you have to take the full year in eighth grade. And so we're currently working out what is that going to look like for a student that doesn't want to pursue that academic level one going into ninth grade. So we're working with world language on that. And, and I'll talk a little bit more about communication later in the presentation because having our weather days didn't help with our communication plan. So we're currently working on what that's going to look like, that required world language piece. For eighth grade, once again, the four cores, but having PE is required. And then opposite of PE, a family consumer science, financial literacy, teen money course that all eighth graders would take, that would need financial literacy benchmarks, and I'll talk more about that. Once again, they can choose to take music, continue on with their band, choir, and orchestra. Or if they chose not to take music, they would take an art and technology and engineering. And then for their other choice, they can continue on with world language to meet that level one equivalency for high school and then, or if they choose not to do that, they would take a tech and engineering and art. And the, just to clarify, so let's say you chose not to take music and world language, you would not be taking the same technology and engineering course for, you would have a whole year of technology and engineering, but one semester would be like problem solving. but one semester would be like problem solving, and the second semester would be manufacturing. So, it would be, once again, taking our same course offerings and putting them in different semesters. Art would be, for example, like art 3D and then art that pays course. So, we would, once again, all the elective courses that we're currently offering are still within the schedule, they're just organized differently.
So, in eighth grade, world language would be every day for two semesters?
Every day for two semesters because in eighth grade, you're meeting the requirement of the Level One Spanish to go on to Level Two or whatever the language is.
And would you take music and art and integrate them so they were every other day again? Like you were talking about?
No, where you could go every other day is with PE and the financial literacy piece, PE and teen money, because every eighth grader would be required to take teen money, the financial literacy piece.
Music is a year-long class in eighth grade.
Right. But rather than, oh, okay, all right.
Right. So, you could choose. Other questions on the layout? So, what's the rationale behind the course placements? Well, the first piece, and where there's probably the most change, is that required financial literacy or teen money piece. As you heard Beth Wyman discuss, Goal 5D of the strategic plan is getting students college, career, and community ready. And we're laying out, you know, three parts of that where we're addressing financial literacy, career exploration, and career and life skills. This would help us in as part of the plan that our action team is currently working on, getting that financial literacy piece and more career exploration into the middle level, making it purposeful and for all students. Because right now, currently, teen money, students can elect to take it. It's not a required course. The next thing is, is you may be going, we've had a lot of conversation about STEM. How come, and the questions have come from staff members and from community members about how come there's this, there's required sixth grade family consumer science, and then you're doing teen money, that financial literacy piece? Why aren't we doing a technology and engineering? Why aren't we doing STEM? Well, here's the reason why. When the next generation science standards are adopted by Wisconsin, which we're kind of predicting they're going to be, but right now, they're on hold because of a lot of the debate with Common Core state standards, et cetera. But we're going to be looking at a required STEM or technology and engineering course in order to meet engineering and science standards and practices in the middle school curriculum and introduce students to STEM careers. And also, this falls under Goal 5D. But we want to do this purposefully and planned and within matching up the science course sequencing along with technology and engineering. And in addition, as you know, Senate Bill 51 that was passed in December now requires three credits of science in order to graduate from high school. We want this to be part of the whole overall plan, 612. And so, hurrying up and trying to implement that doesn't make a whole lot of sense right now. We want to be purposeful and lay this out, 612. So, we really see technology and engineering, along with science, to be really integrated and looped together. And then, the last one up here is this schedule could give us the opportunity to offer PE to students year-round in grades sixth and eighth by doing an AB schedule with PE and the opposite required course. We're currently, once again, we didn't have the opportunity to have our communication like we wanted to, we had something planned for yesterday, and we'll talk more about that. But really, working with our PE department about what's that going to take? What is going to be the, what are going to be the implications of doing every other day PE? But this would give us the opportunity to do that and have students act a year-round. Budget impact, because that's what we've been talking about. We have done some preliminary staffing numbers using this year's student re-enrollment, and we're predicting that our FTE within this is going to stay stable or go up slightly. Once again, we took this year's numbers, this year's student numbers, and placed them in this model. But the caveat here is, we don't know exactly what our numbers are going to be next year and where student choices are going to fall, you know, who's going to choose music? Who's going to chose world language? And so, what students enroll in will drive staffing in the sections that will be run. And this is the same staffing model that we have run for the last several years. And middle school students will not have a study hall or directed study option as they did this past year, okay? And so, we're still placing students in courses every single hour of the day because we really want our middle-level students to be engaged in learning and not necessarily sitting in directed study or what a lot of us know as study hall. So, communication. We are operating in a little bit of a compressed timeframe because we want to get students scheduled going on. Once again, we are reorganizing our course placements. No elective department is adding or deleting a course. We're just reorganizing where things are offered. We were supposed to have a middle-level staffing meeting and feedback session with, and all of our middle-level staff were invited yesterday at 4:00, but obviously, that was canceled. So, we're going to be working on how do we communicate? I had during, we had early release collaboration today, and so, I was on a video conference with our technology and engineering department. I know world language, we have some issues that we need to work out with world language yet, et cetera, but we're working on that. And Google's been good to us as far as using a document to get feedback and questions from staff and get that answered. So, are there other things that have to be worked out yet? Yes, but we're currently working through that. But we think we can manage a more grant. So, questions or feedback? Emma?
I really like that you're incorporating financial literacy, I think, in eighth grade because it's required at the high school level, and I don't think a lot of kids are aware of what that is. So, I think that would be super, super beneficial. And my other thing was with like the world language and having, would it just be a year of it or a semester in seventh grade?
It would be a semester in seventh grade.
See, like when I was in sixth grade, they had the quarter in each of us. Like you got to kind of demonstrate what language you wanted to go into. Would that be kind of incorporated in the world language? Or would you just have to pick which one you wanted to go into right away?
You would have to pick which one you wanted to go into. And that's one of the, that's one of probably the drawbacks, the cons to this schedule. But the other piece of this is, as we're looking at this, we need to address languages. We need to address STEM. We need to address a lot of our different offerings. So, that definitely is a con within this proposal.
And then, do you think with not having like the directed study or the study hall, I guess, that it will, like also, I mean, it can benefit, but will at the same time, will it have drawbacks to the students?
Well, middle school.
I can touch on that. So, Emma, this year, we've done that where we've not had directed study available for students. And I think it's actually helped them because they're forced to take a class that they might not otherwise take. I think sometimes students were taking directed study as kind of a place to hang out. And what we're doing is students that need that extra study hall time for homework completion or a little extra help, we are putting them in a directed study, but it's a much smaller class. So, we still do have that available, but only on an as-needed basis. It's not just if they want to take it.
And I think that's a great thing, too. I know in middle school, I was in a directed study hall versus a study hall. So, I think that if it is smaller, that like what you're doing is like really beneficial. And I definitely agree with all of that.
It's working really well this year.
And I can see just from personal experience how that would work really well. But I was just curious as to like the rest of the students.
Barb?
Just one small question. Excuse me. Sixth grade art and family and consumer ed, are those semester-length offerings or every other day offerings?
Semester-length offerings.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, well, I thank you very much. I was definitely interested to hear what this is going to propose.
It helps having had a former middle school principal in this role and responsibility to be able to tackle this head-on with all the nuances of middle school scheduling.
All right, number five, 4K program report.
Going to introduce, this is Beth Shendel. She is our 4K program support teacher for our 4K program. And right now, she is our only program support person because we are still looking for another 4K support person, so.
And I'm Amy Ashton, 4K coordinator for the district.
All right. All right, so there's a lot of research going on right now that's sharing with us really the importance of early childhood. And one thing we're excited about is that our district already has a 4K program. And right now, approximately 92% of all of our 4K eligible students are enrolled and attending in our 4K program, which is fantastic. And the research up there is just one of many that's supporting why that 4K program is beneficial to our school district and others that are using it, K-12, 4K-12 in their districts. So, we are excited that you have supported the 4K program. And moving on from there, we're going to talk a little bit about what our 4K program looks like. The more we talk to people, the more we realize they may not be aware what our 4K program looks like. And that'll kind of lay the foundation for what we're talking about today. So, a community collaborative approach to 4K is the approach that was adopted by the school district when the 4K program was started. And what that basically means is that we are combining public and private funds to provide a 4K program, meeting children where they're at. So, we're going to the community, and we have 4K programs in private preschools. We have 4K programs in childcare centers, and we have 4K programs in a few of our school buildings, trying to reduce transitions and really use our finances appropriately, combining all the stakeholders in early childhood right now. To do that, there's three different models, a Model One, a Model Two, and a Model Three. A Model One basically means that 4K program is provided in a school district building, and the school district employs the teacher. A Model Two would mean that the 4K program is located at a community site location, and we still, as a district, are employing that teacher. The third model is a community site, and it's cut off a little bit, I apologize, a community site location, and the community site actually employs that teacher. So, when we're talking about our 4K program in Oshkosh, we are using all three of these models currently.
Okay, and that leads us to why we are here today. We really are looking for additional support for the 4K program. We are the third-largest school in the district with 672 kids as of today. A little bit of history of the 4K here. 2006 and 2007, we started out with one school site and one community site between Webster and Peace Head Start. And those were split between two of our elementary principals who were nearby those spots. In 2007, 2008, it increased with three school sites and eight community sites. Again, it was just the two administrators, but there was also, I know one of the teachers who was working on her administration degree was doing her practicum. And this was a big part of it, was to help support this. 2008, 2009, you can see it increased again. We had three school sites, 19 community sites, and then we started an integrated 4K site. And that was the year that there was a birth-to-six coordinator who was hired full-time to work with them. 2009, 2010, same setup. That was also a year of budget cuts, and it was decided that the program, or birth-to-six program support, had to also become the assistant director for special education. And so, it was one program. And so, they added another program support for two program supports. 2010, 2011, you're going to see that it moved from 19 community sites to 16 community sites. But we have three integrated 4K sites at this time. And again, it was with the assistant director slash director of early learning. 2011, 2012, we increased the integrated 4K sites. And that was the year that director of early learning, assistant director, and the two program support teachers continued. 2012, 2013, that's, you know, now director of learning. Amy started as a 4K coordinator. We were both part-time. We have two program support teachers. And then, with our funds, we had also purchased a .3 literacy resource person because that's an area that is really, was very much needed in our program, which leads us to today, and that's kind of where we stand. One thing that I don't have in here is I want to talk about from the very beginning, it was always a very part-time secretary that has been supporting the program when it was at Webster and Peace. One of the secretaries there helped out with it. And then, when it moved here, we had somebody who did, or picked that up as well.
Okay, so, we'd like to spend a little bit of time talking about why does the 4K program need more support? And you can see with, starting with just two classes of 4K, really, that being 40 kids and growing to 672 students, we've had a significant change in the program. And so, there are several different areas that we'd like to walk through and talk about what the support looks like and why we really need more support in 4K. And we do consider ourselves the third-largest school. When you look at the number 672 students, we are the third-largest school in the district. And we do function as a school. We have said as a district that we want to be a 4K through 12 district and really embrace that. But really, when we look at what our numbers look like and the supports that we've offered, that's not truly what we're showing. So, with that in mind, communication, the communication piece, we communicate often with the directors at each site. That is 16 different sites, three that are in school buildings that are principals. That includes also 24 different teachers that are in different sites throughout the community. So, that includes some travel. That means that I'm going out when there's a concern. A director calls me up and says that, you know, I'm having this problem with this student or maybe with this teacher or a parent concern. I may be driving out to that site or going and talking with the teacher on the phone, the director. There's a lot of communication that way. And not only about concerns, but program needs, behavior support. You can kind of see the list here. This communication is also happening with teachers of the 4K program, with parents. Since 4K is our foundation, we find that we get a lot of parent phone calls from new parents having their first child in 4K. Lots of questions related to enrollment, questions related to academics, understanding the progress report, I mean, the list goes on and on. And so, both Kim and myself get those phone calls and try to split that work. That is an aspect that we know needs greater attention to. And then, within Oshkosh Area School District, communicating with our school psychologists for behavior support as well as other specialists. We end up needing more support with technology as a 4K system that's branched out in the community. So, we just recently got iPads for all of our 4K teachers. When their iPads are broken, I mean, we don't have a support system quite like K-12. So, we're trying to work with that, and the three of us become what that source looks like. This is just one piece, so we'll move on to the next part. Evaluation and support for teachers in 4K, that's my responsibility. And with educator effectiveness, our Model One sites are supported and evaluated by myself. But if you're a Model Three site out in the community, you're evaluated by your director. That does cause some discrepancy with maybe what evaluations look like. And, you know, just, it provides concern, I think, for teachers as well just because it's a different set of expectations. So, that is another piece that needs attention. Curriculum instruction and assessment also needs attention. We vision out for what our literacy curriculum looks like. We do the work with the social and emotional curriculum, looking at what our progress reports look like and our online reporting system. And that's all done by the three of us, both Kim and I being part-time and Beth being our program support teacher, who is really supposed to be in the classrooms working with teachers. And she's doing a lot of administrative work because we don't have the support that we really do need. Enrollment is a huge issue. We have to enroll all 672 students in the various sites. And that process takes us hours and hours in the summer to do. We start that process in the April timeframe. They can start placing their interests starting in December. But from April until September, we are placing students, moving students, taking requests from parents. They may change their site request, decide that their child is going to daycare at grandma's instead of daycare at their, the place that had been going. So, lots of changes within placements. It's not like anything else in the K-12 system. The placement in themselves and enrolling students is a huge amount of work. And if the three of us work through that, but Beth has done a lot of time slipping for that in the summer because we just don't have the manpower to get that extra work done. She is a teacher and spends a lot of summer doing placements. We'd like to see a full-time secretary doing that registration process. It's not really an administrative process. It just has become because we have so many students. So, that's one piece. And then, we also have just a long laundry list for secretarial support with someone who is on... support with someone who is part-time in the secretarial support area. We find that the three of us are doing a lot of this work as well.
And right now, things that are specifically tenured to me from my job, taking me out of the classroom, taking me out of the support role for teachers, working with enrollment, helping with transportation, just managing student files, student information for six hundred and seventy-two students, we have a lot going on, and we want to make that a meaningful transition from 4K into kindergarten and get the information where it needs to go. But right now, just managing all of that has become more than what the FTE is that we have for a secretary right now. On to my plate, on to Kim's plate, on to Amy's plate as well. So, it's taking us, me out of the classroom and them away from things that they could be doing in their own buildings or within the 4K program as well.
All right, so, I wanted to give you some comparables, and so, we'll have you take a peek at this chart, and so, I'll just remind you again, we had three school sites and nineteen community sites. So, as you look at our comparables and what they have, you know, that's, so we have twenty-three different sites that we are attending to. Appleton has twenty-seven, and then we are second. And then, you can take a look at administrative support and then additional support. Really interesting, understandably, Appleton has more students, but they also, when you look at, they have a one full-time secretary and then three full-time secretaries, just to place students in the summer. So, when we talk about it being a really enormous job to place students, I think that one really captured that well.
And Appleton knew that going into the planning phase, because their 4K program just recently started, and so, they have, you know, done all this back research with other districts and seen what their program has looked like, and so knew right away. And those secretaries have been busy. I have spoken with the director in Appleton, and each, you know, each one of the directors has said that, you know, you really do need to have someone full-time dedicated to this program, and a 1.0 secretary doesn't even cut it for those summer placement pieces, but really, at this time, that's really what we're seeking, is a full-time secretary beginning right away, so that we can start our placement process for this upcoming year, this summer. And then, in addition, we really do need a full-time, one person dedicated to the administration role. Both with Kim and I trying to split that duty, it's not effective for the schools that we are, or the school that I'm at, as well as the other roles that Kim has. One person would effectively do this job, and with the number of students, we just feel that it's absolutely warranted.
Can you explain to me the difference between registering a child at one grade versus another? I mean, before we had the 4K program, we would have had everyone registering their kids in kindergarten. So, now, it's just been pushed back.
Well, and there are-
Who was doing it when it came into kindergarten, and why can't we have them do it a year sooner?
That's a great question. The hard part about 4K is that we don't have, we're not zoned, like you're going to Roswell Elementary School, you're going to Jefferson Elementary School, because we have community-based sites that have, like, a certain number of students that they can hold in one classroom, and we have a certain number of classrooms in each site. So, our contracts are out there, and we have pockets of kids, of population, where they may bubble in certain areas, so it's, you can't say for sure, okay, if you live on this street, your child's going here for 4K. So, you kind of have to figure out where the pockets of kids are and send them to where we already have established collaborations, where we already have space, where we have teachers. So, it doesn't fit as nicely as, okay, you live in this area, you're going to Jefferson Elementary, and if we have to open an extra section of first grade, however that looks, we don't, we can't do a split-grade level class. We just, we're limited on our options as far as that goes.
We have some of that, obviously. We've sent kids from Lakeside who didn't fit in the kindergarten program at Lakeside up to Smith and so on, but-
You also have daycare issues.
Right, and so, a lot of, a lot of the enrollment challenge is the transferring of children between where they're at during the day and where they need to get for their four-year-old kindergarten classroom. And so, when you have kids at one daycare and then they move, and it comes, it turns into kind of a process, or where their home address is is different than where they're at during the day, but that address is different than where they need to go after school. So, putting the pieces of the puzzle together just looks a little bit different. In 4K, if we want to maintain the current percentage level that we're at right now, with 4K being at ninety-two percent, we really need to make sure that we're getting children from wherever they're at during the day to the community sites that are closest to them, whether that's a school building, or a preschool, or a daycare center, whatever that might look like. So, it just, I feel like that makes it a little bit more complicated.
And the number of community sites makes it even more difficult, I guess.
Correct, because I was going to say, when you were asking about registration, each secretary at a school handled their-
Correct.
Right.
Right.
We have one part-time person who's, well, actually, it's all of us, because it's not-
Under C in your report, I noted the last sentence, which says, "The size of the program located in dispersed locations throughout the community is a significant factor in needing administrative and clerical support beyond the part-time positions currently in place." If you were in fewer sites, you could maintain the current level of part-time positions? Not that I'm thinking you're going to be there, but I guess, for the sake of discussion here, I guess-
It would be easier for the program support teachers to get into sites. It would be easier to go in and do evaluations, but I still think that you still need the right level of support to handle-
But a consolidation-
-the families, teachers, students, et cetera.
A consolidation into space that we may already have would benefit this program.
I guess it depends on what benefit you're looking at, too. If we're looking at getting, the idea of the community collaborative approach was to reduce transitions and get a quality early childhood out to where kids are already at. So, they're already in daycare centers, they're already attending these places, and so, going to them reduces transitions and kind of helps to keep a cohesive environment.
But you said we're actually, we're busing them back and forth from these different locations. We're not exactly going to them.
If they attend a childcare center that partners with the Ashkosh Area School District, they stay at that childcare center for 4K. So, that reduces significantly the amount of transportation that we're doing back and forth with those children during the day and keeps them in one environment throughout the day. So, if you bring them into school buildings, that's an additional transition, and then you have to take a look at what that does for childcare, for families, and, you know, there's a lot of pieces of that. And so, when 4K started in Ashkosh, that was a determining factor in the organization, the ALCO organization that started it felt like, if we can bring a high-quality program to where children are already at, that can be beneficial. So, there are pros and cons, I think, with both, but that's a big piece of it. I think it would have to be a significant consolidation in order to keep the level of support even that we have right now, to do it effectively and get that fidelity across the program, really.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, were you finished?
I mean, you know.
I sort of-
Yeah, I think we, I think we kind of summarized for you that really, we are looking for one secretary for this upcoming year to help start that placement process, and then an administrator for the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school year. You know, that being in place, able to have a cohesive program with one person, being able to do that communication, that visioning, and really not splitting that role with the amount of students, teachers, and parents that have needs, so.
The fifty-four thousand is for the secretary for a half-year? It says fifty-four thousand, year one, January, oh, I'm sorry, January twenty-fourteen. Oh, year one, two, January twenty-fourteen.
That would be for this upcoming-
For this upcoming, and then the following year, we add in the administrator.
So, we're talking about from January till June?
Right. We would, we would want to start that secretary this year, right? So, that, that amount is for this year.
So, the fifty-four thousand is for a half-year?
Correct.
It's from January until June?
Yep.
How is that?
That's not right.
That can't-
Six months.
Six months would be half of them.
Okay.
So, the fifty-four thousand is-
Sorry, that would be-
It would be half of the fifty-four thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I assume that has Bennies in the middle.
Yeah, I'm assuming that's-
Cola pack.
Yeah, so, half of that, that would sound, that would sound-
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See what happens.
Oh, I'm sorry. Barb, did you have a question?
A comment and a question. I want to thank you for the comprehensiveness of your report. I really appreciate having detail on the major points, not just for me, but for those individuals in the community who really like to absorb what's provided to the board, so I thank you for that. My question is regarding the year-two budget or financial impact. Could you break down that hundred and sixty-nine thousand into salary and benefits for each of those two employees? Can you help with that, Sue?
Was that fifty-four thousand or-
Right.
Right, she's wondering if you could break it down into salary and benefits.
We can get that before next time.
Thank you.
Other comments?
I would just like to add a comment. I've been very impressed with the program. I do see inappropriate use of administrative time into clerical work and providing supervision, and then one of the things that the board has discussed in our quarterly meeting, discussion of needing to deal with communication improvement, relieving Kim of some of those additional responsibilities would create opportunities without additional costs to the district to deal greater with communication, because presently, we are taking precious time from Kim and her responsibilities, including staff development and communication, away from that, and that's a trade-off, and that's precisely why I have not brought forward the whole communication issue to the board, because a trade-off here of using Kim's time in a better fashion would be a far better investment than having a person that is not as familiar with schools as certainly Kim is in knowledge, and that, to me, is a better use of time. From the standpoint of, the district has experimented with the issue of part-time principals in buildings, and particularly as we plan a future that would eventually make Lakeside a full, a full comprehensive K-five program, having a traveling principal not there more than fifty percent of the time is certainly contrary to what is the best interest itself of both education, as well as the issue of appropriate supervision and security in a building that is fairly isolated, and having any way from the building is not a healthy thing, particularly in a rural area that Lakeside is servicing. And those are my concerns on the safety side, but also efficiency of staff. To me, that's very important that we attend to those issues. One of the things that you should be aware, because of, not because of our school sites, but we continue to be, and Kirby Schultz and Jay Jones have been working with us on doing inspections of our other sites, because in spite of our partnership, the reality rests on securing each location. The district is liable and responsible for that, and under Kim and Amy's leadership, needing to deal with safety and security of those locations. If we truly had the space in the district, in spite of the positiveness of the partnerships, it would be great to be all in one site, but I understand fully the issue of creating efficient relationships with childcare centers and other pre-K programs, and partnership is very positive. The last piece that I would want to emphasize is delivering quality service for four-year-olds is the first experience, as they were describing earlier, the first experience in contact with schools for our first-time parents. And having it as well-organized, and part of the issue that complicates all three of their work, and as well as the clerical support, is that they are the most customer-sensitive, friendly group of individuals who change things five times in order to accommodate one parent's request. And five times registration, it means that in reality of the number of students we serve, some of those are re-enrolled and changed, and the real enrollment may be closer to two thousand in reality, because of wanting to be of customer service delivery. The first impressions that we leave are through their leadership in the district, and when we have ninety-two percent of our students experiencing that, their first taste of what the public school is not in kindergarten, but in that K-four program, and that is a critical part of our marketing relationship in our community. And that extra effort is really a combination, and I see it on, you know, it's just a good thing they don't care my color, because I know they could be driven to it.
All right, well, Kim, we're going to ask you to remain, but we thank you all very much. And next, we'd ask David Gunlock and Andy Jones and Julie Moser to join for the Ashkosh Strategic Plan Quarterly Update. Some of which we sort of heard through the Ashkosh for Education Quarterly Report.
Dave thinks he can do it in five minutes, but I-
That would be awesome.
We can do this easily in five minutes. Partly because Beth already did the majority of it, and she did it far better than we can, so I guess I would direct your attention to the screen. There've been a few changes. One of them is that you can follow our strategic plan, just as anybody else can, by going to our website. It is actually a live connection right to our strategic planning document. So, you know, as we make changes every Monday, that is reflected in a live document, and everything is updated as we go. I won't go through all the different components, but clearly, there were five main priorities that we've been working on. You're all familiar with those at this point. Everything that's brought before you is linked in somehow to these strategic plan items. What I've done here is I've broken it out by the various goals, and the last time you received an update was August 2013, so you can see the changes there. Remember, those percentages are calculated automatically by the spreadsheet, and what it does, it looks at the duration of the activity, it looks at what percent it is completed, and for most part, we only use zero percent, twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, and a hundred. We tend not to get more granular than that, because that's sufficient. And then, the system auto-calculates what our percentage is. You'll see, most of them have progressed, some have actually regressed, and what that means is, is that as we've worked through some of those goals, we've come up with additional steps and action steps, and that sometimes knocks our numbers backward, but we're making some pretty solid progress. Goal 1A was develop an employee recognition plan. You'll see, we went from seven percent to twelve percent on that. Goal 1B, and I've highlighted, by the way, the ones that we've made some significant progress, most of which have been brought to you. Goal 1B, develop a database model to compensate OASD professional educators. We've made some significant improvements on that, largely due to a lot of the meetings that have transpired with human resources. Goal 1C is align funding, staffing. That went from five to seven percent. We've made some minor progress there. Goal 1D, implementing educator effectiveness. You'll see, that one, we actually slid backwards, because we added a series of steps to that and bringing some of the stakeholders along, and we just haven't had time to calendar that, so that one went backwards a little bit. But you can see that we went from twelve percent complete to twenty-six percent complete. Also, remember, these are, this is a three-year set of goals, so the fact that we're already a fourth of the way through the first one is significant. Priority two, which is working together to achieve a common goal, fostering and growing the citywide PTO, we've progressed from ten to thirty-five percent. Developing, delivering a database quarterly feedback system for the board, we went from eighteen to twenty-nine percent. The community agreement was signed back then, so that stayed static, and actually, we regressed a little on redesigning the board work sessions, and a lot of that was around some of the things that, about board governance that the board has yet to work through. So, those were some added steps. So, that really stayed static around forty-one percent, exactly forty-one percent, which was surprising.
What exactly on board governance have we regressed on?
Well, what it was, was we added a couple of steps about some professional development for the board on what is board governance, how do some of these things work, bringing in-
Board policy governance.
Board policy governance, and those steps were added, I think, about two to three months ago, and then we just haven't proceeded down those, so. Priority three is communication, implementing a school messaging system. We've made a couple of movements forward in that, largely because we're going down the road of implementing Infinite Campus. Three B, developing and implementing the communication plan. We have developed our own YouTube channel. Actually, we have a couple of YouTube channels. One of them is for external communications, and one of them is for internal, and the majority of that progress can be attributed to Kim Brown, who's been working on the-
Inside Look?
Inside Look Show. So, that is now being posted on YouTube as well as on OCAP. Goal 3C is developing and implementing a coordinated system that will leverage social media. That's part of the YouTube channel, some of the things we're doing with Google Plus as well. So, that went from nine percent to fourteen percent complete. Priority four, equity among schools. The biggest one we've progressed on there was the three-year tech plan. We're about eighty-one percent of the way complete, and that, really, what's remaining for that to be complete is the DPI giving us their- is the DPI giving us their formal approval. It has been submitted after your last board action, so that should be coming out shortly. 4B, we stayed static regarding the standards of practice and facilities. We've implemented the at-risk plan. We've moved forward with that, and we've developed an RTI plan. That went from 65% to 69%, and that takes us about a little over half the way there for priority four. Priority five, the big one, teaming with groups in the community. You'll see 5A, strengthening the partnerships. We added several tasks to that, and that one actually slid backwards a little bit. The one we made significant progress on was expanding and strengthening the school-community partnerships. So 21st Century Skills, Soft Skills, et cetera. That is largely due to the overlay between that and our three-year tech plan. Goal 5C, partnering. We made some minor changes to that. Didn't really progress much on that one. Goal 5D, every student being college, career, and lifelong learning ready through partnerships with families, business, community, and higher ed. That, we made some progress. Went from 6% to 20% there. Goal 5E, we made significant progress reversing, now, we didn't make progress reversing the trend, but we made progress gathering some data about that and working on some of the factors, sort of laying the groundwork for our e-learning, and so that we have some, our e-Academy can provide offerings so people do not necessarily have to leave. Now, we did start to bend that trend, which is great. Hopefully, we'll see some more positive developments in that in the future. Goal 5F, resolving the cell-site facilities, and Goal 5G, those two have not progressed. They just, in sequence, are later down the road. So that doesn't surprise us at all. So we moved from about 10% to 20%, and that's about what you would expect from priority five because it really is dependent upon 1 through 4. Phew, was that five minutes? That had to be under five minutes.
It was a long five minutes.
Yes. Now, the five minutes don't count if you ask questions, because that's on you. That's not me. So. If you have any questions, as I said, Beth did a fantastic job with a lot of the specifics, so we thought it would be redundant if I then came up and restated a lot of those, so.
Anything? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As with the presentation from Beth earlier, and our goal is to continue to do quarterly updates for you to establish the practice of making sure that you have a very clear understanding of the progress we're making.
Next is Andy Jones, Employee Recognition Plan. Andy, I'd like to introduce the people you have with you.
Yep. This is Kathleen, I'm Tony, and Tim Cole. I want to thank them for waiting till the end of the meeting for this. Before we get started, I'd just like to thank, there are just two representatives of a much larger committee that has been working all the way for the last couple of months. So we just have a tech question. Dave, we're going to have to have a hot link here eventually in the back, so one of the slides we need to click on the link, please, and somebody do it. Okay. This is Strategic Plan 1A, and this committee was formed in September, and we've been working monthly from September all the way through December. We reviewed, went around the conference and kind of looked around at other schools. What do other school districts do? Gathered that data. We also looked at what OASD has done in the past and took that into account. And we developed a survey, which we had an enormous response to. 614 people responded to our survey, so we had a very big sample. And through all of that, we gathered a lot of different data through all those groups to come up with some of the ideas we're going to share with you tonight. One of the big changes that came about was discussion around money. And should this award, and it'll be, I should more say awards would be more practically correct, should we have money tied to it? And essentially, the feedback we got was if we add money to this, it turns into something very competitive. It starts to get to be a little more political and other things. So the committee decided that this is going to be based on recognition, and we're going to leave money out of it. And through our survey, that came through loud and clear as well. People had concerns about that. So those are some of the big changes we had. I'd like to highlight now, again, what does this mean and what does this word really reflect? Well, it reflects a dedication to students and districts or others, service to others, outstanding achievement in your job, relationships with students, others, or the public or community, a leader in your field or job. It could reflect years of service to OASD and a strong work ethic. That's what this proposed award will do. So a little more about the details, but now I'd like to introduce Kathleen, so she's going to talk a bit more about that.
So there are different categories, administrator, certified staff, which includes the teaching staff, support staff, and then outstanding first-year teacher. And we would have eight awards for the year. We do have two recipients for the certified staff because of the number, so it was a more balanced proportion for that. Who can nominate? Anybody? Students, teachers, community members? And it's a very simple nomination process. There is an online form, and it's, we'll open it up right now to show you. It'll be communicated out on the website as well as shared with the staff. But with the form, they fill out the person they want to nominate, and there's criteria that is listed there, but we're asking for 800 words or less. You don't have to include everything. If we click on the detailed list of the nomination criteria, there are some specific questions that can be answered.
You can see the questions up there right there. Criteria, that was the next couple of slides. You can go back to PowerPoint. Probably easier to see where you go on that one. And Dr. Jones mentioned some of these things. The criteria are listed on the form, so people can decide what angle they want to take as far as nomination goes. Dedication to students and district and the community are all mentioned in these things, as well as outstanding achievement, relationships developed, years of service, leadership qualities. So we try to make a comprehensive list. You don't obviously have to meet all of these things, and it's something to help people fill out that 800-word requirement for the application. So all district staff are eligible, and you saw how many, you know, two for each area in most areas. And then recipients, once they win, will be eligible for winning every other year. We felt that if they're motivated to keep improving their learning, that they're not teaching the same thing year after year after year, so in two or three years, you're not the same teacher you were, hopefully. And I can tell you, especially with technology, that can't happen anymore. The nomination committee that's going to review these, we'd like to have a balanced representation across the district. Ideally, we need to have two from each of these areas. Not necessary, but more broader representation that's reviews the entrance or nominations the better. And also, once we do have it narrowed down, these recipients can also be nominated for the Herb Cole Fellowship as well. The information can transfer right over to that nomination. And then the winners or the people recognized will be recognized at Celebration Education Awards Ceremony by this March. There'll be a digital plaque that will be made at Ashkosh West, and then also hopefully a tag plaque that can be added to the school. Other announcements could include display on the district television, advertising school newsletters, and press release, anything to make that communication with the public that we have some people doing some outstanding things, and not just teachers, but staff throughout the district. So, and that's it.
The intent is probably within a week, we're going to send this out to every employee in the entire school district, as well as put on our webpage, so that the community, if a community has a deserving employee, they can nominate as well. And so our goal is to turn this around very quickly this year. We want to be able to present these awards by the end of March. So it's going to be a very quick turnaround this year, and we'll be including some directions when we send out the email. But we don't have a copy link. We try to make it very easy and not so cumbersome for people to do, and that was another thing we heard through the survey. Don't make it tedious and difficult to nominate somebody. So we really feel this is important because we do have such so many exceptional people, you know, in all aspects of our organization, from custodial food service to our teachers, our secretaries, our administrative team, all ranks. And we really want to encourage people to take advantage of this process. It's just a vocabulary clarification. A tag plaque is, the winner will receive a plaque, but we would also like their school, they'll start when they win at a school. Let's say they won at North High School. A person won at North or West, whatever school, we'd start a plaque with just a tag on it, and then all the winners will be staying at the school and be listed each year as more recipients win from that individual school. Yes?
I just have really two quick questions.
Sure.
One would be, so basically, I know student government, a lot of the custodian staff really, really helps out with us. And let's just say, if we nominated someone, and I was just wondering how the process would work. You may have stated this, but how would the process work of actually picking out between administration and teachers?
Right. The entire committee, and it was, as we went back in the slide, if you, Tim, would go back to that, two of everything, that all of those people would come up with a rating scale, and they would review all nominations, and then we would have a total score, a rubric developed for them to nominate and rank, or say, this one I thought was a four, this one was a three, this was a two or one on strength. And then through all of those individuals, they would come up with a, we'd come up with a cumulative score to determine the winners in each category.
So what you're saying is then what, they would fall under a category, so you would be ranking or reading theirs against...
Yeah.
...a teaching staff or administrator staff.
Okay. And also, I was wondering, so for the winner, also, other than the publicity aspect by like social media, and like you said, the district video thing, is there anything, is it just, are they being recognized? Is that the tag, is that the only part of winning, or?
And they're going to receive a wooden plaque, a very nice wooden plaque with their name on it, et cetera, that can be posted in their room or wherever they would like. And the tag plaque would be permanently with each school. And eventually, what we'd like to do is, similarly, when you walk into the entrance, we'll have the winners on a rolling screen. And eventually, as the TVs get deployed out into the school, the vision might be that they would also be in the rolling screen at each school to say, this is our award-winning teacher at, you know, at your school would be West, and this is, you know, Mr. and Mrs. so-and-so, and maybe a short blurb about them and a picture of them, that type of thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Individually considered resolutions. Could I get a motion to consider resolution to exceed revenue cap commencing with the 2014-2015 school year by an amount of $3,950,000 be resolved by the School Board of the Ashkosh Area School District, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, that the final school district budget shall include an amount not to exceed $3,950,000 in excess of the revenue limits imposed by Section 121.91 of Wisconsin statutes each year for a period of seven years on a non-recurring basis, beginning with the 2014-15 school year and ending with the 2020-21 school year for the purposes of paying district operation and maintenance costs and acquisition of technology equipment. If further resolved pursuant to Section 121.93 of the Wisconsin statutes, the foregoing resolution be submitted to the electors for approval or rejection at the election to be held on April 1, 2014.
Second.
Discussion? No further, oh, Barb?
I just have a question on the phrase at the end of the first paragraph, district operation and maintenance costs. I'm not quite sure what that means in relationship to the earlier conversation about reducing the deficit.
In the reducing the deficit, first of all, this is quite prescriptive language that must be included in it, but it would theoretically, within a budget reduction, there could be operation and maintenance reductions that could occur and that would reduce that program. It wouldn't exclusively be just instruction, but operations are there. Sue worked with counsel on the very prescriptive language that comes out of statute.
This doesn't limit it to operations and maintenance in terms of physical maintenance and operations?
Right, right.
It does not?
It does not.
Operations means like the daily operations of the whole district. It doesn't refer to the very slender definition of operations and maintenance from a, you know, Randy Johnston-type physical.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other comments? Please call the roll.
Aye.
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 Could I get a motion for resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of a resolution to exceed the district's revenue cap commencing with the 2014-15 school year by an amount of $3,950,000, whereas the School Board of the Ashkosh Area School District, Winnebago County, the district, has duly adopted a resolution entitled "Resolution to Exceed Revenue Cap Commencing with the 2014-15 School Year" by an amount of $3,950,000, in quotations, "the revenue cap resolution," and whereas the School Board of the district is required to submit the revenue cap resolution directly to the electors of the district for rejection or approval pursuant to Section 121.913 of the Wisconsin State statutes, now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of the district as follows. Section 1, referendum election date, a referendum election shall be held in the district on April 1, 2014 for the purposes of submitting to the qualified electors of the district the proposition of whether the revenue cap resolution shall be approved. Section 2, polling places, the district electors will vote in the referendum elections, election at their regular polling places. Section 3, note of referendum election, The Northwestern is the official newspaper of the district with daily publication. The district clerk or his or her designee is directed to give notice of the referendum election as follows: Under A, by publishing a Type A notice of referendum election in substantially the form attached heretofore as Exhibit A in The Northwestern on March 4, 2014. B, by publishing a Type B notice in substantially the form attached heretofore as Exhibit B, which includes a facsimile ballot and voting instructions to electors in The Northwestern on March 31, 2014. And C, by publishing a Type C notice of referendum in substantially the form attached heretofore as Exhibit C in The Northwestern on March 31, 2014. This notice should be printed as close as possible to the ballot portion of the Type B notice discussed above. Section 4, absentee ballots, the municipal clerks of the municipalities within the district are hereby designated and appointed as the officials who shall receive applications for absentee ballots and initial the same when issued to qualified absentee voters. Section 5, report of results of referendum election, in accordance with the Section 67.053-G of Wisconsin State statutes, the referendum election shall be held and conducted, and the votes cast thereat counted and canvassed as in other matters voted upon, and the result... and the results certified forthwith to the clerk of the district. The district clerk shall then report the result of the referendum election to the school board at its next regular or special meeting adopted this eighth day.
Could you repeat that? So moved.
Could I hear a second, please?
Second.
All right, now commentary. Any further commentary? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Aye.
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 Could I repeat that? All right.
That was good. Come on, admit it.
Request for future agenda items. Anyone have anything they would like to see on the list of future agenda items listed on our calendar? No, seeing none, announcements?
Two. One, I would just like to take this opportunity really to thank the board for all of the painful deliberation you have through this process, being brave and taking strong action to turn around the district is, is an incredible feat. Remember, this in the history of the district is the first such operating referendum that is not tied to a physical facility operation. And that is an incredible move on your part and we will work extremely hard to support you and in the community and communicate the message regarding this referendum. And we are so pleased to, to move on and we expect that we will have the efforts of all parties working arm-in-arm to get this to the community and have it understood clearly by the community. So, thank you for that. And then just one last reminder for those of you, board members, if in the next couple of days that you could submit names of citizens for participation in our process to Sherry, it would be really helpful because I'm hoping that we could get at the latest Monday or Tuesday next week, a letter out to those individuals to invite them to those sessions so we get them planned about four weeks in advance, so.
You're looking for six names, is that right?
Five names would be fine, would be fine to, would be very helpful.
And that's for the referendum, not the budget?
No, no, that's where, that's budget.
That's for the budget reconciliation.
Just the budget rec, I thought you needed names also for people to?
Yeah.
Do something else.
Yeah, we'll be sending a notice to you regarding that issue. We, the very careful line of, of education versus vote yes or vote no committees are a very separate issue that we'll carefully have to approach.
Okay. I'll wait.
All right. Could I get a motion to adjourn to executive session? For the purposes of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business where, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session under 19.851E, A, Oshkosh Education Association OEA negotiation strategies. Two, considering the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility under 19.851C of Wisconsin State Statutes, contract renewals for specific administrators.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll. Aye.
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 We are in closed session.